Agenda in this plane?
Um, it should be at the first page.
I'm doing it. I got it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's muted.
So she just texted Zoom is restarting. So should we start? I mean, there's nothing that crucial right now.
Right.
All right, so we'll just get started?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, I'll give you the word. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Julianne Hirsch, Chair of the Select Board. I would like to call this meeting of September eighth, 2025, to order at 6:33 PM. This meeting is being conducted as a hybrid meeting in accordance with the provisions of the Open Meeting Law. It is being streamed live and recorded. Before we begin, I will state the members who are present in the room. That would be Jacob Jones, Jonathan Ray, Mike Teigen. For remote participants, I will confirm that they can be heard and be, and that they can hear us. However, we are waiting on Laura Zaitin, so as soon as she establishes connectivity, we'll, we'll be okay. All right. And then because we have remote participants, all votes taken at this evening will be by roll call. All right, let's begin. On the agenda, first thing is public comment. Is there anyone who has anything either here in the room or anybody in attendance who might want to offer a public comment? Okay, so seeing nothing, then seconded by Jacob. So this roll call vote, Jacob?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I also vote aye, motion has passed. Okay. Third thing is the application for common victual or license for Muya, new ownership, pending application approval from building and fire departments, discussion and vote. Okay, so unfortunately, the person has, Mr. Tadayan cannot make it tonight because of work commitments. So you all have the application. And we just got some information from Stephanie that the fire and?
So fire, I do have an updated, I'll give it to you. The updated sign off saying they're complete.
Okay.
Right there. Because I think you had one that they were, it was still inactive.
Right.
And then the building, we contacted Bob today. He couldn't make it tonight, but he said he's not involved because it's not regarding a renovation or any type of building. It's just the change of owner. Health Department, Mike Seager approved on September fourth, so they're okay with it as well.
Great. Okay. Do you want to see this?
Uh, no, it's fine.
I'll pass this around. All right. Are there any questions or comments on approving this victual or license? So this is just a change of ownership, Diane, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
There's no coupons in here, right? There's no coupons?
Surprise. Yeah.
Okay, well, don't let that affect your vote. Okay, then if there's no comments or questions, is there a motion to approve this?
I move that the board vote to approve the application for a common victual or license for Muya under new ownership contingent upon receipt of all required approvals from the building and fire departments.
Second.
Okay, all, oh, Laura's here. Laura, you can hear us?
Yes, sorry about that.
Oh, great. And we can hear you too. So have you caught up where on the, okay.
Do you need to do a roll call? Oh, if she's only part of the vote. Okay.
Yeah, so the next one.
Yeah, the next one, probably.
Well, we're going to do a roll call vote on this.
Okay.
Okay. So a motion has been made and seconded, and so we'll do the roll call vote. Do you have any questions about this license? Laura?
Nope.
Okay, great.
If I have one minor comment, maybe I should have made it earlier. I always would appreciate to see an applicant here, but I'm not, I'm familiar with this facility, have read the application materials, I'm prepared to support this. So it's not that we're not, it's not that we're just rubber stamping. We are considering these things carefully. I just wanted to make that point.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, roll call vote. Laura, how do you vote?
I didn't hear it.
Laura? I think your audio is, how do you vote, Laura?
I'm good.
Okay.
Uh, my favor, aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Congratulations to Mr. Tadayan. And let's move on to the next item on the agenda. And this is where we have Mr. and Mrs. Doyle, request for temporary road closure on Blake Street on Applefest. So, welcome.
Thank you. Again.
You guys are matching. It looks so nice.
Oh, nice rays.
Yeah.
So you may start.
So, good evening, and thank you for allowing us to be here. We're representing the Northborough Rotary Club, and we are asking permission to close Blake Street on September twentieth for the street fair. And from about seven o'clock in the morning until probably five o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay, I just want to make sure, okay, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. That gives you enough time to?
Yeah, we'll, um.
You're experienced at this, you know.
They're pros.
We'll be there on, on Friday evening to do the actual numbering. Although we have, everything is laid out as of now, and we know exactly this year we will be going all the way from Main Street to Pier Street. So it's going to go all the way back. So we need all of the area for the street fair this year.
So there's, there's that whole section of parking that belongs to, that's not affected?
It's all going to be part of the street fair.
Oh, it is?
Yes, going all the way back.
Okay.
It's all, it's all booths. There will be approximately a hundred booths there. We will this year be having a food area, and we'll be having food trucks, which are, you know, different than we've had before. So we'll have some, some different food choices, hopefully some other things added to it. And where that, so that'll take up that whole area in front of Fatouche. And then we'll be going all the way back to the Doggy Den.
Sounds, sounds excellent. Just have a question. So how, the, all of the businesses and homeowners have been notified of this?
They.
Or do they have to be?
Well, they already have, with the exception of the, the Doggy Den, and which is no longer called the Doggy Den, but that business is, has a booth at the street fair. So we're, you know, they're fully aware.
And, and, excuse me, every year, the police takes care of letting the people know that the street is closed, that they can't, after that, there's no more parking on the streets, so they have to move their cars in the morning or the, you know, whenever they, they get around to it, but that they'll, the road will be closed, they can't go in and out. So the side, they can get out of the parking lots and go out towards CVS and out toward the fire station, but they can't come forward into, into Blake Street. And they, and they, we, I think, I think you've spoken to all the businesses. We've spoken to all the businesses that are, that are butted, so they all know that we'll be there and it'll be closed. And you, you have the, some of the things that we've given out to the vendors that give them the directions that they need to have, so they know what they're doing. That's part of one of the packet that we gave out. We're hoping that, well, at this point, as it has been, and this is, again, we, we used to fill it up until COVID. So this is the first year since COVID that we've gone all the way to Pier Street. But it's, it used to be that way always. So we'll see if it's going to work this year. I know there are some people who have planned, who always used to park there, but we will have vendor parking at the, where the, the old fire station was, it was taken down, so that'll be vendor parking there. And so that's, we'll have at least someplace. And everyone will not fit there, but they expect it, except the out of towners. They're not used to it, but.
People figure it out.
Yeah, yeah. So, so as you can see, we're going to be zero waste again. It worked last year. People did not complain, and so it will be that way again this year with no, no water bottles there, no, no commercial water bottles. Bring your own bottle. We're using Northborough, good, healthy Northborough tap water will be available everywhere around. There'll be recycling, composting, and trash transfer stations, and there'll be young people there from our interact club that will explain how to do any of your recycling that you may, you may have questions, people may have questions. I think last year, they fielded a lot of questions from people who came and said, can I pour, where do I throw this? And the kids explained to them, because they all, I mean, excuse me, our interact club won an award two years ago for their work with this sort of thing. So they're, they know what they're talking about more than we do, and they'll show you if you want to know. And that saved us money, so we didn't have as much trash. DPW didn't have as much to take away, trash barrels didn't get overloaded. So it worked, and we'll continue it this year. The idea is zero waste. We tell our vendors, what you bring in, you take out. Don't fill up those barrels with, you know, your refuge, you take it back home with you. So.
Thank you so much.
So that's, that's the plan, and hopefully we're training people, noticing some of you have your own water bottles with you. Just, just commenting.
Let's just hide.
Yeah, Mike, you didn't see anything. Nope.
This is double styrofoam.
Double styrofoam.
Just, just to mention it. So, and, and, you know, we're expecting a big event this year. Oh, we have to tie it up.
Excellent.
Any, any other, oh, you haven't had your vote, you have to vote on us, so.
Oh, well, I was wondering, does anyone on the staff have any, you will have portable toilets, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's the only concern.
We've got three. We've got a handicapped and two regular, and we have two wash stations.
Super.
So there'll be hand washing set in different places in the fair. One is right with the porta potties and.
Right, no showers.
No showers, no. But wash stations, which we, last year was the first year we had wash stations.
Oh, that's good. Yeah. Okay, comments?
I just have a question. I'm a little newer, so I'm going to support this, and so this does, answers to this question don't impact, I'm going to be supporting it, I appreciate the event. But I think our DPW director mentioned that there's some amount of effort by the DPW to support this event. I think there may or may not be police details, I'm not sure. My question, if anyone knows, is does the town provide all those services for free? Do they charge for them? How does that work?
We pay for them.
Oh, okay. Well, that answers that.
We pay for the DPW, and we pay for the police detail.
And, and there is a police?
Yes, there is.
I thought, I read about that.
Yes, yeah.
I remember one at the farmer's market, too.
I have no idea.
Okay.
They, they're their own entity.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all right. If not, then is there a motion to approve closing Blake Street?
Yes, I would like to. I move that the board vote to close Blake Street on Saturday, September twentieth, 2025. Do I say with the rain day twenty first, or?
I would, yes.
With the rain day for the twenty first, between the hours of 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM for the annual Applefest Rotary Club Street Fair. Second.
Motion made by Jacob, seconded by Mike. Roll call vote. Laura, how do you vote?
Aye.
That's an aye?
Aye. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Mike?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
And I vote aye, and on behalf of the board, thank you so much for doing this every year. People really look forward to it.
They do, they do. We can't wait. It's going to, it's, the R A I N, that word is not known, anyone's vocabulary. And so when we, we are, we're very excited at the person that you're going to talk about, talk to next, being a part of the street fair this year. It's a new addition, and we're pretty excited about it. So just to put a good word in.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is Eric Martin to talk about the application for a one day license to serve wine, wine and malt?
Aye, just malt, just beer.
At the street fair.
And then, I'm sorry.
And you are doing business as Rushford and Sons?
Yes.
Okay. So tell us what you're going to do.
Awesome. Also, I just want to note, my wife is, and also, one of our partners is at home. She is just given the time that she's at home with our two children, so, but she is remote.
Okay. You want us to bring her in?
If she's waiting, I would.
If she wants, yeah, she can raise her hand.
What's her name?
Lisa.
Martin?
Lisa Martin, yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Dana.
So, thank you so much, and also I want to thank Pat and Skip for working with us. So actually, it's really funny. Applefest kind of ties into how we came to Northborough. 2017, we moved in three days before our son started kindergarten. And really quickly, we didn't really know much about Applefest, and then that kind of was our, like, real, like, intro right into, like, the neighborhood and get everything going. It was real fun. I'd been homebrewing with friends of mine for years. Cut to 2020, when we decided to go pro, and people knew about it, and you start getting, you know, when you're hanging out in backyards and you're talking, everybody starts doing the, hey, you know, it'd be really nice if we could do something. All these other towns are doing this thing. So we've been trying to do it. We started Rushford and Sons, and like I said, neighbors were asking for things. We're in Upton, Mass. We pour for Upton at, we've poured at July Fourth Fireworks. We've poured at the, the beach. For the town, we've participated in Hudson Rotary Club Spirit of Hudson. We do a bunch of things. And so this year, with the new amendment to the bylaws for being a report in public property, we figured this is a pretty good time to catch up the Rotary Club and add that addition to the street fair. And so we're really excited because it's going to be bringing people together, right? It's, it's, it's right in the food, right? So we're doing with the food. We have the food there, we have the vendors there, and we're the kind of place, it, it's a very family forward type atmosphere. I'm going to be one of the ones pouring. It's, it's really an addition, and it really just ties in with the food and just part of the excitement and the fun and that extra, you know, thing to Applefest.
Oh, sounds good. And I should mention to the public that we received a glowing email supporting this, this application for your, for your business. Okay, so comment?
None.
Any comments, questions?
I have my standard.
Yes, please.
If you've heard me before on these, I'm not picking on you. This will always be my comment as long as I'm here and as long as there's alcohol involved. I'm not for temperance, but I am in for reminding everyone who participates in this chain to help us keep our roads straight. Just for the record, I'm reading a report from Boston 25 News, June eleventh of this year, Massachusetts leads the nation with second highest rise in alcohol impaired deaths, according to a study cited in that. Obviously, neither your venue, nor any of us, nor anyone in our town wants any harm to come among any of our residents, but we all know that, that requires everyone involved to take adequate precautions. Obviously, we're checking IDs, we're following the law, but also, you know, everyone's a little different in terms of what it takes to get them impaired. So will you do your best to help us keep our town safe?
Yep, absolutely. If I may, you know, we're doing per, even before this application was put in, I talked with the Rotary Club next stop, was talking to Police Chief Griffin, talking to Fire Chief Parenti, and having that conversation of what are your concerns? What can we do to make this easier? So it's wristbands, right? I'm tip certified, my wife is tip certified. We're all tip certified. You know, so we're going to be doing that. You know, so checking for that, you know, flagging things off, and yeah, exactly. This is not, we're much more like mind.
Just thanks for being a partner with us, and I don't want to, again, I'm not picking on you, because everyone gets this spiel.
I, 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 as you know, I'm, I'm at meetings and I listen in on these, and absolutely.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
So all three of you will be there?
Two.
Two.
There'll be two of us. I just put on my wife just as an alternate, just in case we need something, just to grease the wheels as it may, right? Just to have that card on file automatically.
Just out of curiosity, are you offering a non-alcoholic beer yet?
Not at this venue, just because there'll be other non-alcoholic alternatives.
Uh-huh.
But at, at our taproom, yes. At our taproom, we absolutely do, because, yeah, I mean, there's, and.
Stand hand.
I, I am known to, I have the Athletic Fest beer in my fridge right now, and we have the Fest beer. I'm happy. I was just drinking some of it yesterday. Yeah, it's definitely, I'm with, it's, it's supposed to be a enhancer, an addition, not the only thing.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, all right. So any further questions, comments?
What, have you decided on what you're going to be pouring?
Yes.
Could you preview it?
Uh, yeah. So we're going to be, we're going to be having, so it's our Beesnese, which is a light ale, honey ale, Slush, which is one of our IPAs, it's like a hazy IPA, and then since it's the late September, Autumn Harvest, because it's pumpkin spice latte time.
All right, great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And from staff, no concerns?
I'm thirsty.
Okay, well, with that concern, is there a motion to approve this, this license? Laura?
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to approve the application for a special one day license to serve wine and malt beverages pursuant to MGL Chapter 138, Section 14 for the Rotary Club Annual Street Fair on Saturday, September twentieth, to be operated by Rushford and Sons Brew House, represented by Eric Martin.
Probably better add the rain day.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Yeah, just.
It should be on the license.
Add that.
With the, with the rain date of September, Sunday, September twenty first, 2025.
Excellent. Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
John? Laura, motion made by Laura, seconded by John. Roll call vote. Jacob?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you so much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Looking forward to seeing you there.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay. Next on the agenda is?
The grant, the CPA project.
Right.
For Ellsworth McAfee. Rec and Public Works. The dynamic two O.
Yeah.
Yes.
Get stuff done.
So we have DPW and Parks and Rec here.
Yes.
All right. Tell us about your idea.
Well, the CPC application, draft application was provided to the board. The lavatories at the Ellsworth McAfee Park has been on the capital plan for a number of years. It has come forward. It was discussed during the opera expenditure discussions. The board at that time chose to go in a different direction. With most CPC projects, we do a two phased approach, design services first, and then construction funding thereafter. It's hard to bundle them together, because if you don't know what the community wants for a building, how do you price it? So this would be the design services component, component only. Design includes a geotechnical analysis of borings for the foundation that's required by the state building code. The building will be served by public utilities. We have water and sewer in the street. That'll require a site survey in order to get the utilities to the building site. The location will be approximately where the current one is. My expectation is the footprint will be quite a bit larger in order to accommodate code compliant lavatories for the use. So a number of fixtures depends on the, the use. You got a restaurant that has four seats, it's got a lot different than 400 seats. Whether or not there's a concession stand or not, we're not sure. We'll go to the Parks and Rec Commission to vet out the details of the program. We are looking at likely having a covered pavilion area with ADA accessible surface, so parents can watch the field on one side and be close to their vehicle or handicap seating for their, for the, for the needy. So that's the goal. That's what we like to do. The community believes it's expressed and desire for. We currently serve the entire area with porta potties. There's no washing stations. There could be hundreds of people there in the, in the summer at a soccer event, so it's, it's warranted. The operations of it would probably be similar to some of our peer communities that have field houses with lavatory facilities. The lavatories will be open 24/7. The concession side or, and/or the storage and equipment side would be closed, but the lavatories remaining open. They would not be single, single lavatories. The last thing you want to do is have an overnight lavatory open and have that door be lockable. So exactly the logistics of it, I don't know, but that's all part of the design process.
So cover, so restrooms, questionably concessions?
Correct.
And a covered pavilion?
That's what we like to do, yeah. That's what we've scoped out initially. I'd like to get the, the design work done with the largest possibility there is. It's hard to bring it, add to it later. If it's needed to scale back because of costs or because of needs, it's better to go in that direction. I won't have to go back out and survey more land or do more borings if things are going to get bigger. It's better to just do it big and then make it smaller during design.
Okay, all right. I'll bet there's questions in, oh, hi, Ellie.
I just wanted to state, so this is my 25th year here, and I can honestly say that every single year I've had multiple people come and ask me why we don't have bathrooms, whether they need to wash their hands, help their child who needs to change a diaper, whatever it may be. You all know how busy that park is. We've been trying to do it for a while, so this is something that I would really love to see move forward. We have been doing a lot of beneficial things in town together, and I feel like this would just be the cherry on the top, because I can't think of something besides the dog park that people have asked for, for more.
Okay, I'll open it up for discussion. Anyone? No? John?
Couple of questions. Is it budgeted?
Is what budgeted? Is what budgeted?
The $90,000?
This would be a CPC request for CPA funding.
Is it in the CPC budget?
We haven't proposed it yet.
So, oh, I should have prefaced this. These are new forms. So, so I have a new CPC form, and I have a new grant form. And it's supposed to alleviate any question. So for instance, I don't want the department heads to go before the CPC, and the CPC says, yes, okay, we're going to do this, and then come back during budget season and say, no, we don't want that on the warrant. We, I don't know why you would, you know, go before town meeting, dah 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 dah. So this is kind of, you know, we're not putting the cart before the horse like we were before. We're having an open discussion and, you know, talking about any future maintenance that will come along with a project. And I think we've been, you know, not as careful as we should be. But just keep in mind with CPC, it's under mass general law, the CPA. So, so the board doesn't grant approval, whereas with a grant, before we can spend money, you, the board has to grant approval. So I just wanted to clear that up, so, you know, we're not stepping on toes, but
So this would initiate, if approved, to go into the spring meeting as a warrant?
On the CPC.
Okay, clear. I didn't appreciate that.
Oh, okay.
No, that, that makes sense. And, and the other question is, what is the contemplated cost for the build? And we can arrange, and then the contemplated, based on your experience with other towns, as you've done your research, maintenance, yearly operating cost?
The construction cost, I'd estimate somewhere between 3/4 of a million dollars and a million dollars. Operating expenses, maybe $30,000 to $40,000 a year. We would save, that would be offset partially by the, no longer needing porta-potties down there. We pay $15,000 to $18,000 a year for sanitary services down there. It would provide some additional benefits, just as far as cleanliness goes. It's just, you know, on a Monday, after a long weekend of a lot of sports, those, some of those porta-potties are pretty unpleasant.
And they are cleaned twice a week. And it's the
We've had calls that
We have a lot of people at that park.
They get to know which one to use on a Sunday night.
Okay, so you said 3/4 to $1 million possibly for a full build-out, $30,000 to $40,000 per year in maintenance. But right now, we're paying almost $20 in porta-potties.
Yeah, somewhere in the $15,000 to $18,000 range for porta-potties, depending who wins the quote.
Okay.
And it's really going to depend on what we end up doing as far as the size of the building.
Yep.
Right now, the concessions, we did bid it out, and Yulmans was selling things out of there. With, and some of the proceeds went to Northborough Youth Soccer. But we went out to bid this year, and no one was interested. Before that, I don't know if you've noticed, but baseball and soccer don't have their snack shacks open. We don't have volunteers anymore, unfortunately. So that's kind of gone away. So if, you know, we'll talk to the Parks and Rec Commission about, and soccer, because obviously they're very involved down there, to figure out if that's something we want to move forward with.
If there's an opportunity, a lot of these prefabricated structures are, I don't want to say modular, but they're built by bays. So you'd have like a pavilion bay, you know, 12 by 24, a lavatory bay, 12 by 24, concession bay, 12 by something, and then mechanical, electrical, and, and storage. So you could design it so that a bay can be put on later, as long as it's appropriately designed. So you can put pavilion, lavatories, mechanical storage, and then have the site at least flattened out so that, the, the structure design, so that you can add a bay in the future in the event they ever wanted concessions. So if the commission said, you know, no, let's not do concessions, it's probably best to spend a little extra money and flatten out the ground and spend a little on, on design, just so that it's, you know, we have a little foresight.
Any other questions?
Yes, a couple of questions. The CPC funding for the design, is there also the ability to use CPC funding for construction?
Yes. Yeah, this is a, would likely be a large ask. We funded the Melican Middle School Field Lighting Project through CPC, but that took two years. We funded the Assabett Playground Reconstruction through CPC. That also took two years. We purchased the materials one year, and then the next year, we installed them. That's not really an option with the, the pre-manufactured building, because they're not going to leave that at their shop. Build it, they get it out of it. And I don't have a place to store building.
Right, right. Now, that, that's fair. Right, and I'm kind of thinking, right, hopefully with a successful special town meeting coming up, you know, some of the expenditures that were kind of talked about and planned for from CPC towards the White Cliffs property won't be there. Hopefully, you know, won't be needed. You know, so I think that, that does leave maybe some, some room there. I know with the White Cliffs property, we borrowed against CPC. Is that an option in order to, to get the materials, get things completed, and then essentially pay it off?
It's like a mortgage.
I would think it is.
No, it would be a much larger request, but yes, you can.
Using, but borrowing from CPC like we did with the White Cliffs property?
Correct. I mean, you can forecast the revenues into the future and use those as your estimated source to fund the debt service from.
Okay.
As we did with White Cliffs.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
I think we still have two years of White Cliffs. So it could line up.
Good to know.
You answered a few people, like outside financial, from financial planning or appropriations.
Yeah.
Their questions.
Yeah, we got an inquiry from
George?
George Brenkel. He had a few questions, similar to ones that you posed, Mike, and we forwarded him your, the answers we provided to you. I went over most of them right here. How big is it? What are you going to have? What are the facilities? Regarding my comments about the operational hours, I don't know. I'm basing that on what Dean Park does, on what Little Fenway does in Grafton. There's a few other parks that lavatories remain open. Some have doors, some have that S walkway in. So there's no way to, you know, go in there, close a door, and jam a, you know, door jam underneath the door, so now it's locked and, you know. So there's different options when it comes to operations. We'll talk to the Parks and Rec Commission about that and vet it out during the design phase if this is approved.
Is there any thought, these, these kind of investments in the community are nice family tie-ins, and they attract a lot of interest often to reach out to any of our Northborough businesses that may be interested in any funding at all? I've seen them at other towns, like, let's say, whether it be a, you know, a big company, a chain, whatever it is. Has that been explored at all? And not necessarily fund the whole thing, but partner with the community.
Kind of like buy a brick type thing?
Well, I've seen plaques too, like, thank you, and sponsor levels, and, I mean, I
Like baseball fields?
Yeah, I don't want to say the names of, but I'm thinking there's like some prominent businesses that are very much prioritize the same thing. Some sponsor Apple Fest, like things like that, where they may want, they may align with their sort of corporate priorities. Sometimes you have to ask. These opportunities that look like this do come up a lot in town, so it's just, just an idea.
We, we haven't done that. That would be done prior to construction. We did do that for the Assabett Playground. And the one entity that we reached out to had a similar condition that they did on another municipal project, where they provided a donation, and about 3/4 of that value had to be put up and assigned for them. So they gave a big check, and over half of the value of that check went toward a, a large memorial for that company. So we chose to go in a different direction after that conversation happened.
It's, it's, it's a great, in theory, that's a great idea, but with a project this expensive, it's, you know, to get a sign or whatever it may be on the side would be fairly expensive, so I'm not sure.
Better off doing what the skate park did with Dixon.
Yeah, asking for
Have a contractor come in, hey, can you do a slab? We'll advertise you. Yeah, great. Boom. And that's what the skate park, how the skate park was built.
Oh, okay. That's interesting. Okay, so you mentioned that, that this is like modular construction, kind of. So $90,000.
For the design.
For design?
You're talking about water, power?
Yep, we're going, it's probably, I'm going to say $8,000 to $10,000 with the land survey, 12 to 15 worth of borings. We haven't utilized any design service for, for National Grid to bring in electricity. All buildings need to be 100% supplied by electricity now, so that's a, could be a substantial electrical service if it's a concession stand. You need to design the foundation. The pre-manufactured structure is just that. What you would, you know, if you got a pre-manufactured house, it's probably 60% of the cost, you know, for the structure itself, everything else, the, the fit and finish is expensive, and all that needs to be designed for compliance with the code. So you have architects, civil engineers, geotechnical engineer, MEP, which is a mechanical, electrical plumbing. It's a process. It's a, it's a process.
Laura, did you have a hand up?
I did, sorry. Can, can you, so, thank you Scott and Ally so much. I know this has definitely been something that has been of interest for the community for a while. I am still a little bit, I'm having some concerns, you know, from a financial perspective after what was shared during the financial summit. And I don't know, you know, first and foremost, you know, I want to make sure that we're not going to lose staff, and I want to make sure that our residents are going to have what they need. And I'm not sure if the CPC money would even be something that could go to offset, you know, protecting some of those deficits that we may be facing. And so it, I love the idea of this. I'm just concerned about that big financial outlay right now. We've got so much uncertainty and so much coming up. But if this is the only thing that we can put through CPC because of that way that that money is earmarked, then I, I agree, this would be a great project. But I'm just kind of wondering if there's anything that was highlighted during that financial summit that CPC money could be used towards to help. I don't know if that's something we can answer now, but that's really the thought that's in the back of my head. And I hope you understand that if we didn't have so much uncertainty and we didn't have so much, you know, financial stress coming down the pike, this would 1,000% be something I would be in favor of. I just have concerns about money. And so, thank you though very much for bringing this forward. I definitely understand the importance of it.
So I think CPC money can only be used for recreation, historic
Open space.
Preservation.
Open space.
Housing, and what?
Open space.
Open space would, this would be open space, right? Open space recreation is one, and then housing is the other, then historic. I do believe the planning director indicated a desire to put a CPC request in for Blake Street's Pocket Park this year. And, you know, what Ally and I do is, you know, we, we listen to the community when it comes to these types of projects. We listen to the community, what they, what they're, what they want, what they're interested in having for new amenities. And then we bring it to the boards and committees to see if it finds fruition or not. This isn't the DPW director saying, I want bathrooms. I would, for the community, I think it'd be great. I'm not sitting here saying this is a good fiscal use for the town of Northborough's money. Saying this is what the community is interested in. Here is the process to, to give them that. Other priorities exist, and I know that. So this, this is just one of the things to put on the scales. That's all.
First of all, I think that it's a long time coming. I think it's a great idea. And, and you're right, the park is just getting busier and busier. Now, we have pickleball, and that's, that was a great investment. So is there any way of, when this is presented to CPC, to get a, some guarantee from them that they will fund the whole project, the building of it?
We've done this quite a bit, and generally, if they approve the first part, it's because they're interested in the project happening. Otherwise, they wouldn't do that. So bearing, you know, a fiscal open space emergency or something that happens the next year, generally, if they're going to vote the first one in, it's because they're interested in moving forward the next year.
Okay.
Because we lay it out, just like with the lighting at Melican. You know, we, we knew what we were going to do first. We knew what we were going to do the second year. We presented it together. And so moving forward with the first part pretty much presumes that you're going to move forward with the second part.
Okay, good.
The, the one thing I'm wrestling with is to have the food pavilion or not. And building it for the future, not having the conviction that we've shown that we can successfully do that in a world of food trucks, like, just seems like we might want to be more clear on what it is and flattening and doing the extra electric service. Like, if we were to go down this road, I'd want one that was like prudent in terms of what we thought the use case was, and not necessarily built for the future.
Well, I would not recommend designing the electrical service to accommodate a, a full-service kitchen. And I don't believe that's what most parks have. They generally have warmers, freezers for ice cream, and coolers for drinks. The electrical service would be upgraded, upgraded in the event an addition was to be put on for concessions. When I say make accommodations for that, make sure the water service line-in is large enough, which is not a big difference. The pipe is the, the trench is the trench. The money's not in the diameter of the pipe. Make sure the site, when it's, when it's prepared, there's a small flat area, you know, you don't push all the dirt to the side and put a big hill there where you can't get to it. And make sure the geotechnical information is adequate to accommodate in addition. And make sure the site survey is adequate. So just kind of get all the data needed to, if you want to add something, so you don't have to sit here with these soft costs. And when the, when the building is designed, there's adequate openings for fasteners to put on another bay. A terminal bay can be different than a midbay, so you make sure it's adequate to serve both purposes. So it's not a big cost. It's just, you know, a little foresight.
Okay, and then would you, would you, are you contemplating the DPW because of this module or do all the work? Are we going to contractors with prevailing wage? What's the
It would be 100% contractors, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments or questions? Yep, Jacob?
A couple of questions. So I understand this would be for design, and so that would be part of the recommendation that the designer gives us. But is there any contemplation for, there's a structure there right now.
Correct.
What is, is there an idea of what would happen to that structure, demo?
It would be demolished, would they raise it, yeah. There's not much to that structure.
Right, you know, I've been there. Yeah, I've just, I've had a daughter who's had a couple soccer seasons here. Been to the pavilion near the pickleball courts for some other community events. I'm quite familiar with the park. Whoever's maintaining those porta-potties, I feel like they've done a great job. I've not used them personally, but my daughter has, and I've, you know, checked things out, and they're doing a good job for whatever anecdote that's worth.
We, we shoot for, what Ally and I do when we do CPC, CPA projects, is to try to get a lot of different entities involved. You know, if we can get the Assabett School to come in and help and do some work, that's great. If, you know, if we get some, some vendors to come in and volunteer some time, or some landscapers, local contractors. It may not be a lot, but the more, I don't know, the more people at the barbecue, I guess, the, the more diverse the project, and people like it. So there's an opportunity for some Assabett help here. They don't do some of, some of the work that there, there is. They don't have masonry. They don't do
Plumbing.
Heating, plumbing. They do plumbing, they do electric. They don't do heating. They don't go on scaffolding or ladders. So, over a certain height. So there's pieces that they could help with, mostly like the, probably the fit and finish?
Other question, and don't go into any more detail than is appropriate, because I don't know just what the relationship is. But I know that one of our partner associations that helps pay for some of the stuff at that park, because they operate a lot there. Have we, have we talked to them about any involvement of funding from that association?
We have not yet.
Okay.
I mean, they're obviously very interested in this project, but we have not talked about finances with them.
Sure. I'm always hesitant to, to bring up too early in the process Assabett until we've had an opportunity to talk to them. But a few of you board members are, are a bit new. I believe, Julian, you were on board, and Laura, you were, when we did the, the water sewer garage. We roughed it, we had a contractor rough it in and build up, put up the prefabricated shell. And Assabett came in and did all the fit and finish interior utilities, with the exception of the HVAC and the elevated work.
They did a great job.
Yeah, we, we put in a million-five building for probably, well, not probably, for $100,000.
Did they do the pavilion or the gazebo?
They redid the entire pavilion at Ellsworth. They redid the field house at Memorial and the gazebo at Ellsworth for us.
Does anyone, and this is a question for anyone who might know, does anyone know of any other open space-related applications that are pending or planned before the CPC this cycle?
I haven't heard any.
The Blake Street would be open space rec. So that would fall into that category.
Because I know they have to spend 10% in each category. Because I know they have to spend 10% in each category.
And rec can have up to 70%.
Right, well, any of them can have up to 70 in any given year, as long as the other two have 10%. I'm having a hard time with this one because while, I'm having a hard time with this. Because I understand, whether I like it or not, the CPC is required to spend 10% of its whatever amount on this regardless. And so it's like, if it's going to be spent on something, I'd rather it be spent on something that I prefer over something I don't prefer. If I had to choose between this and the Pocket Park, I would choose this. But I don't know if that's the choice I'm being given right now. And so, but my bigger picture is it's, I'm kind of echoing a little bit of what my friend Laura, co-member Laura mentioned, about, you know, how we're spending the town's money. And I understand CPC money is different, but in the end of the day, that's taxpayer money. It can only be spent certain ways. But it's, if it's not spent this way, it's spent in another way, you know. The 90, it's hard because I'm like, the $90,000 I could probably get behind, but I don't know if I'd be able to get behind the $1 million for what's coming after. And that's the trouble I'm having is, and if I'm not willing to get behind the $1 million that's coming after, why would I get behind spending $90,000 on a plan? Because here's what's going to happen. You spend $90,000 on the plan, then the argument is, well, we already spent $90,000 on the plan, so we have to do the thing because we get stuck in sunk cost fallacy. And so, the time to stop sunk cost fallacy for me right now is right now. And even though I'm like, again, if it was between this and Blake Street, I'd prefer this. But that's, you know, I'm also thinking that's kind of a false dichotomy. The other issue is when you're now looking at $1 million of CPC funds, now there's who in the affordable housing and in the historical are going to have needs that are going to say, well, I want those needs met. Then now those needs can't be met, particularly, you know, I know affordable housing constantly has a lot of, you know, requests that may not be able to be met because we need a larger chunk of CPC money in whatever year this would be for this. And then again, I'm just looking into the future where we say, well gee, we already spent $90,000 on the professional. That's going to go to waste. And, you know, why did we do that? So that's, I'm trying to think, give you guys a view of my thought process here because it's like it's... It'd be nice to have permanent restrooms there. I also think 10 years into the future, public restrooms at parks are the kind of things that get defaced. You know, I don't know if $30,000, $40,000 a year is reasonable for maintenance. I think it might be more than that. When you're dealing with graffiti and defacement and stuff that unfortunately happens sometimes at public, you know, facilities like this that aren't constantly under maintenance. We've got to heat them and cool them and make sure water's not freezing in the winter. And meanwhile, I'm just looking at the facts on the ground that I can see, which is that like, yeah, I mean, the porta-potties aren't great, but they're functioning. So I don't know, I'm having a hard time. Maybe someone can help me.
No, I, oh, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, I think a great point that you brought up is that the money for CPC is coming from taxpayers. And I think the positive part about CPC applications is that it goes to the public to vote on. So if more, if the public wants it, they're going to vote for it. And they know, just like you said, with the $90,000, we're going to clearly state that it's going to be a lot more the next year or two. So they're going to know that when they vote on it. So I think that's the positive part about the CPC is that you are handing it over to the taxpayers to make that decision.
So the $750 million, I base that on $525 a square foot, which included the concession stand. So again, if a concession stand isn't warranted, I'm not an architect. I don't know how many fixtures we need in each lavatory. I know structural bays, so I did what I just said. Structural bay, structural bay, structural bay, structural bay. So I'm not sure how big it's going to be. But that's where that number came from.
Yeah, well, and I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm also not an architect, but I have seen information recently about how much public construction projects cost and they tend to cost more. So when you say $750 to $1 million, even if you're including a concession stand and we ultimately decide like my friend John said, maybe we don't need a concession stand because of food trucks and things, which I kind of, I'm thinking the same thing. I'm still like, you're probably still over a million. But I think when all is said and done, when you got to build it up to code and you got all kinds of stretch code, I don't even know how you do stretch code for a building that's open. Never mind all that, but it ain't cheap, that's what I know.
Right.
And so a million I'm thinking is probably conservative. I'm wrong, but, so I'm having a tough time saying, well, let's spend $90,000. I understand where we are in the process is we're basically endorsing a request to the CPC. The CPC then would grant or deny it. If they granted it, we would then decide to put on the warrant. And why wouldn't we if we got to that point? And then it would be to the town meeting to vote on it. I get the process. But it's like, if I'm having this thought process right now, which is that I don't know if I would go for the million, then I have a hard time justifying to myself why I would approve the $90,000, even though I understand to your point, it's for the taxpayers to decide at town meeting. But if it, but if everything is just to be decided at town meeting, then what's this board doing here? And so I feel like as a member of the board, again, unless someone can convince me why I'm wrong, I'm kind of like, hard to say, I don't know that I support this one.
No, I mean, I don't think your concerns are wrong. You know, if this was an ask for $90,000 from free cash or funding construction completely from a debt obligation or part debt, part free cash, kind of like the Blake Street kind of was offered at last town meeting, you know, I don't think I'd be even open to kind of moving forward on any level of it. What makes me, where I'm at, what makes me okay with moving this forward is one, there's going to be additional checks, right? There's going to be, what does CPC want to do? What do they think? Are they interested in this? Then it has to go to, you know, back to us to put together a warrant for town meeting, which we, depending on how it looks, don't necessarily have to do that. And then there's town meeting as a final decider and we get another vote if we want to decide whether we endorse a warrant at town meeting that spends $1 million, right? With, or the $90,000 and then additionally run through that all again, right? Spending the money for the building itself. And then kind of going back to what I said earlier, CPC was already in the plans from what was discussed in our meetings of spending near this amount of money on White Cliffs. And that was to just knock down, knock down the dining area and tie up the building. Granted, I believe that was over time, not sort of like this single expenditure. So that has to be kind of worked out. You know, maybe there's an opportunity to take advantage of borrowing against it, kind of like how we acquired White Cliffs for an investment in the town. So because now the piece that, you know, we can't pass on to CPC is the maintenance and the upkeep, which is substantial. Granted, maybe a half to a third of that is already being spent on the porta-potties. So there would be an extra amount that the town would have to take on. So it's a matter of, you know, is, do you think this type of an investment is worth it? I go back and forth, just like you Jacob, you know, it's a marquee park in town. We have large events there, the summer concerts, I went to them. Having actual bathrooms would have been really great at those packed concerts. You know, the sporting events, pickleball. So because of that, I'm kind of weighing all that out. And I would be okay with going forward with this with, I know my name is on, to make the motion. So I'd be comfortable making the motion and voting in support of it to at least move the ball down the field. Because if we want to punt later, we still have that opportunity. And there's other checks to it.
Thank you, Mike. Madam Chair, just one more, one more check that there is, Mike, is this does go before the Financial Planning Committee?
Right.
John Campbell, the Chair of the CPC typically does one evening at the Financial Planning Committee.
I think, great discussion, sentiment shared across the board. You know, I do go back to the, what we have and I've been in residence since 2012. My kids went to soccer program, I've used them. They're fine. I mean, but I do look at other towns I travel to and these don't age well. Like, there's a lot of maintenance, there's a lot of things. Kind of uncomfortable leaving unopened at night, just in terms of, like, you just, I just don't know, like...
Wouldn't you lock it?
What's...
Who would lock it every day?
We'd have, we'd have a similar...
Who would, Ally?
We'd have a similar conversation as we did with the brush area.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody would have to come back.
So John, John will.
It's good that this one's going through a good process.
Yeah.
But, but no, I, but I do think that like these, look around, think of where you've been and some nice towns and these are shuttered often and they're locked and it's for a reason. Like, these don't age well. And I think it's a bigger ongoing liability than we give ourselves credit for to make these sort of investments and with the trade-offs. So I do get, in the financial environment I am, and I'm also very opposed to studies for studies sake. I want to see a clear conviction. Like, I was in a meeting the other day and we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars of studies for Blake Street, which I didn't know and it was kind of like concerning that we spent that much. I'm like, wow, what if we just did something with it? So those are my, those are just some perspectives that I have.
But you have many people in town requesting this. By any slight chance, do you have a number of how many people use...
Oh gosh, I'm not joking. Every time I go down there, somebody asks me if we're going to have bathrooms. It's just a, it's constant. It's just, like you said, there's so many different people down there. It's not just soccer families. You have, now you have pickleball, basketball, volleyball, skate park and the track. The track brings a lot of people there that would normally not go to a park.
But I was wondering if you had an idea of how many people use the park?
Oh gosh.
That's impossible to determine.
Laura knows.
Laura's got a hint. Oh gosh, I'm sorry, no. It is a lot. And I will say, you know, I love the idea of having the washrooms. I love the idea of figuring out a way to manage the hours just to make sure that they're maintained. And I know Marlboro's got key codes on theirs, so they're able to manage the hours that they're open and closed. One of the things that we really haven't spoken about that this will solve though, is that we don't have any water. And I've been at that park on hot days when kids are running around playing soccer. And it is concerning that we don't have water available. So in addition to the washrooms, I do like the idea of the water access. And I appreciate how Mike kind of laid out the way that these next steps will look. I know that we don't have anything to weigh this against in terms of projects. I would, at this juncture, like to support it, just because there will be other avenues. But given, you know, the, just given the fact that if something that is going to solve a bigger problem for the town is going to come up, I just want you to know it's not personal, it's just that we really have to be as fiscally cautious as possible. But I appreciate the value that this would bring. And I can tell you that the number of people that want bathrooms is very high and I spend a lot of time on those soccer fields. If you want me to start counting people, I would be happy to do that. But it's definitely a need that's been requested.
Okay. Okay, so are we ready to vote? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to endorse the department head request to submit a Community Preservation Act funding application in the amount of $90,000 for design engineering services to replace the existing Ellsworth McAfee Field House with a facility that includes lavatories and to forward this request to the Community Preservation Committee for consideration.
Second, please.
Thank you. Okay, motion made by Mike, seconded by Laura. Laura, how do you vote?
Can I, one more discussion? I know you had a discussion earlier, but I...
No, 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 it's always, it's always...
This is a really hard one for me. So I know I said earlier that like, I don't want to support something now that I may later say, well, but I don't actually support the big thing. Because it's like, I support it, it's the question of what am I supporting, what am I not supporting because I'm supporting this? Is ultimately that, and I don't know what that is. So my understanding is, if we say yes, the CPC will have this application and possibly one or more other applications vying for its allocation of open space. You know, they have to do the 10%. I can't, whether I like it or whether I don't like it, I think that's what the law says. And so I am sitting at the, thinking that maybe for the purpose of giving the CPC the option to have another option, even though I may not support them going with every option we give them, that I support giving them an option. I don't know, does that make sense to anybody?
That...
Sounds like I am, yeah.
I'm just discussing still, we're discussing.
Yeah, I mean, we're not putting this to a vote, we're just...
Anyway, that's my...
A binding vote, so I understand what you're saying.
Because at the same time, I hate, I hate being like, well, let's just say yes so someone else can decide. Because I feel like, no, we're here to make decisions too. But I think I've made clear what my thought process is, so I'm, yeah.
So our vote is to, basically to move it forward to...
To the CPC so that they can consider it among other applications they may receive.
And so that you can say the select board...
Supported.
Supported moving it forward to you.
I think because we're in charge of the land, since it's our land, we have to approve the application.
No, you don't. You guys can't approve the project, of course, but you can support...
Approve it being applied for.
Yeah, you could either vote to support or not support, yeah.
Steph, just to be clear, so in a scenario where no is a majority vote, the CPC can still do what they wish. And, I mean, so this is just a signal to the CPC of how we're feeling.
Correct, yeah, which is important.
If the board was to vote against this, you know, two to three or what have you, I would withdraw the application immediately. I would never submit an application for funding, whether it be to CPC or any grant entity where this board did not support it.
Oh, thank you.
But can I mention something important? I mean, I think the taxpayers have the right to vote on what they want or say no. But the important part is to say, hey, listen, so here's the design phase, here's a projected amount, the constructional cost, and here is the cost of ongoing maintenance. They need to know that, like, we're having this conversation right now. And then, it's on record, everybody knows. If you're voting, you know what you're voting for and what the future impact is.
By the way, these are great, these new forms?
Oh, good, thanks. Yeah, we've been fine tuning them as we go.
And Steph, thinking forward to spring town meeting, are you contemplating that our warrants will have that information on there? Annual maintenance cost, the build-out estimate?
It wouldn't be in the warrant language, but well, because the future, like for instance, this first step is design. So they already were quoted, $90,000 for design. We're not yet, we need to see how, what they're looking at in the design to then get the construction cost. So we won't have that number, but we can say, you know, and we got an estimate from other, you know, companies or...
Well, the engineering firm will be contracted to provide an opinion of probable construction costs. And that'll be based on all the information gathered as well as the project scoping. Part of it boring is not just geotechnical analysis to find out what the soil conditions are and if there's stuff that needs to be amended or you need a deep foundation, it's also what's in the soil. When a boring contractor is boring and he's taking split spoon samples, when he opens up a split spoon, if it smells like oil, that's an alarm and that's a costly alarm. I would not want to go before the town meeting body and saying, "It is a $700,000 project" when we find $300,000 with the bad material in the ground.
But there's no threat of that, no indication that the...
I don't know. I don't know. It used to be a field, somebody could have abandoned a Ford there. I have no idea.
And I honestly think a project like this will attract people to town meeting that wouldn't necessarily, you know, it's almost like a school project where people just come out of the woodwork. I honestly, I know you might not believe it, but I really think that there's enough people in this town that would come just to vote for this.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I definitely think you're right. And, but I, but I also appreciate that, you know, this board is looking forward to, you know, basically not wasting $90,000, but just to get some kind of assurance that there's a mechanism to pay for the actual construction. So any other comments? All right, there's a motion on the table to endorse this. So roll call vote, Laura? Aye?
Aye, sorry, can you not even...
Okay, I'm taking that as a thumbs up. Okay, Jacob? Shall I come back to you?
Very difficult decision, I'm going to say no.
Mike?
Aye.
John?
I'm going to vote no as well.
I vote aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, the next thing is, are we moving on to the grants from...
Yep, from Carol, our senior center.
Going to...
She, no, she's not here, but these are pretty simple. So let's see, the first one, it was a service incentive grant from AGE Senior Center Modernization for $1,020. And it was for updates to the senior center lobby, which had new signs and brochure holders. That's what she was going to use the funding for to help... and brochure holders. Um, that's what she was going to use the funding for to help modernize our senior center and make it more safe with clear signage. Um, and there's no, um, demands or impacts on the town. So that one's pretty easy. Um, the next one is a caregiver respite grant for $7,215. Um, it's the cost of running the Daybreak Program, which is an amazing program. It's, um, the caregivers, as you know, you know, they're burdened with taking care of their, you know, a family member with dementia, with Alzheimer's. So this gives those families a break. They get to drop off, you know, the, um, person, their family member with dementia or Alzheimer's and, um, you know, they help them with, you know, certain learning and physical games and just spend time with them, play music. And it just really gives everybody a break and a very needed break. Unfortunately, uh, Springwell that is behind this grant, I don't think they're going to offer it again. So the other towns that are also involved, Hudson, I think Marlborough, um, there's, there's other towns that are involved with this grant. They may, um, you know, pool funding and see if they could go into a regional grant. So this might be only one year. Um, but the caveat with, with this is, um, it would be, where's, oh, Jason, where are you when I need you? He left. Okay.
He'll be right back.
Anyway. I'm like, still his stuff. So he can't leave. Um, so we can, they wanted, well, Carol wanted to hire, um, this position as a town employee. It's just like a seasonal worker, basically. It would be a, you know, so the only, you know, we asked the question, is there any exposure to the town? She said, you know, if we couldn't get the new grant to continue the position, the applicant might be eligible for unemployment compensation. So then that would be on the town. Um, but it, Jason can weigh in more on that. Um, so that, that's the only concern with that. But I am such a supporter of this because the poor families that don't get a break, they never get a break. It's such a great program. Um-
Don't move on to three yet, okay? Uh, first of all-
Oh, Jason. So we were talking about the caregiver-
I gotta put the rate at the wrong-
I know. I go, Jason. I'm like, steal his computer. Don't let him leave. So I'm going over Carol's grant for the caregiver program for the Daybreak. Um, and we were talking, she said she would like to hire her as like a seasonal worker and the only exposure could be that, you know, we might have to pay unemployment.
Right. That, that would be out of our under-
Oh, you need, yeah. Just, you can just come up.
So I may have mentioned this at, at the summit, but one of the things that for municipalities, the unemployment system, generally a private business, they get assessed a tax for unemployment and it funds a trust fund, whereas municipalities participate on a reimbursement basis. So we wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't necessarily be our fault if we were assessed an unemployment charge if somebody were part-time and they were eligible for unemployment. We might be exposed to liability with unemployment. But, um, yeah, so that, that, that would be something that would be outside of our control if, if we hired somebody and they qualified for unemployment.
And I don't think, did she have to have this person under our, um-
I think, you know, that you would weigh that against misclassifying the employee as a vendor and paying them, having them submit invoices. Cause they're, I, I think, having talked a little bit about the circumstances, that it's not truly a, a situation where somebody, this person's in business providing-
Oh, gotcha. Yeah. Yeah.
So, um, I thi, I think the benefit of classifying them as employee correctly is not really a choice. We have to classify people correctly.
That'd be good.
But the, but the other side of that would be the liability of the, of the unemployment versus the, the liability of being audited by the IRS and being assessed for unpaid taxes and so forth. So, um, yeah, the, just to acknowledge that with, in any circumstance where we hire anybody, we're subject to potentially unemployment liability if they file for it.
Quick question, if you know, can I ask?
Yeah, go, please.
Um, I don't, this is a stupid question. Say I'm a part-time person and I, you know, make obviously a salary or a pay, paid based on whatever part-time I work. When I go for unemployment, it's, my benefits based on that job are limited based on what I was employed, right?
Correct. Yeah. The, the assessment to us would be based on what they were, what they had been paid by us. Yes.
Being a one quarter of an FTE, then your unemployment benefits would be proportional.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And, and not just the benefits, but more importantly, what I'm concerned about is our assessments.
Correct. It would be based, it would be relative to what they earned. As, as, I think it's a, a look back period of 18 months is what they look back on.
So this is for a nine-month program, but the grant is for 7,215?
That was my question.
So that covers, I mean, unemployment costs might not be that much if-
No, it, it, it would, in this case, it would probably be relatively minor, the, the liability.
Right. Yeah.
We're disclosing all, all liabilities and trying to exhaustively discuss the, the expenses that are related to these things. So that is one.
I guess the follow-up on that point, Steph, how do you sort of get all that for $7,200? Or am I misunderstanding something?
Because the Springwell grant, you know, um, how that works. It was, it's, it's various towns that are combined with Northborough. And, you know, they've been funding this Daybreak Program. I think this is the last year. So that's, that's what it must be. Each, they give each town 7,200, which will cover a part-time-
In the Northborough Senior Center?
Yes.
To provide the service to all those towns. Okay.
Yep. Yep.
But it's only for a year?
Nine months. It's a-
Nine months?
Yeah.
Because it says, will a new position be created? Yes.
Well, because I asked the question, will she be a town employee or will she, you know, work under some other entity? And she said, I would like her to be a town employee.
So that means at the end of the nine months-
Actually, maybe I-
She becomes, she or he become-
If they can't so-
We have to absorb the cost.
Well, they're working on funding already. So it might be, um, and yeah, let's see. I wish she was here, but Carol.
And would we know if that position at a part-time with the regs of like, say Worcester Regional Retirement, do you know if they would be retirement eligible?
They, they would, they would not be at that level of, of hours. They, I mean, they'd, they'd contribute to a retirement plan. O, OBR.
OBR. Okay.
Yeah.
But there's no town liability for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Remind me to get Carol's cell phone. I don't, I don't have it.
Okay. So it says, is there a deadline for town approval? And, and it's October 1st?
Yes.
Um, there's, there's, so I, I guess-
Well, we meet the 22nd. So, yeah, I, I would call.
Is anyone else wondering, like, at, if this is the last year for this grant, then we started this program. Do we just say, I mean, this is a little bit-
Well, there's funding this year and this is what we're looking at. Next year's a whole different story. And they're, they're trying to see if they can get another grant with a regional, um- Yeah.
Well, we can also, you know, discuss it September 22nd, if there's more information.
Yeah. That's good. Let's do that. So we'll just put this, we'll table this.
What other questions do we have so that we can come prepared? Is there a program now?
Yes. It's the Daybreak Program. So this is why we're seeing grant funding for our town and then all the other towns get funding and it, it funds the full position, that part-time position.
Oh, I see. So that person goes from town to town?
From town to town. Yeah.
And now it's in our budget?
No, because we are receiving grant funding and Northborough just turns that over to her. So it's, it's like she's a vendor, but she's not. Yeah.
Okay. Is anybody averse to, um, you know, getting more information at our next meeting? Are you read, are you ready to vote? Or?
I think more information is great. I just want to say for the record, I'm fully supportive of us having a policy of treating people appropriately for IRS purposes at all times.
That's an easy one. Um, I'm inclined to support this, but I also would be happy to get more information. So.
Yeah. I mean, it kind of keeps the program alive for another nine, that we already have for nine more months. And it sounds like the only possible liability is if, when this grant goes away, additional grant funds or other funds are not backfilling it, this person, we could owe a portion of their unemployment if they were to file.
Right.
Could we let's, may I, um, if we at some future point don't have funds or don't, or decide that we have inadequate resources to continue it, could we say, we'd like to decline to receive your services in the future? And she, this person, keep doing their services in other towns and just not in our town and not bill us for it? Like, does that, I'm not saying I want to do that, but I'm just saying, is that an option? Does anyone know?
Possibly.
Okay. It's okay if we don't know.
What happens if we don't get the, I mean, it sounds like we're getting this covered by a grant today.
Yes.
Um, so if we, and so it's deferring some or all of the cost we're incurring?
It's what?
The, the current grant is deferring some or all of the cost we would incur?
It would be, it would defer all of the cost because each town is getting enough to cover the full position for nine more months.
And then if we chose not to do this grant, do we have a, a deficit where we're paying it anyways?
Well, the, the only thing is a percentage of the unemployment on $7,200. So that's, but would the person go for unemployment? I don't know. But that is an exposure. I mean, if we had to look at everything.
And the person is considered a Northborough employee because they'd be in the Northborough Senior Center?
Yeah. I want to call her. It's, I'm such, my personality, I'm like, let's just get it done now.
Because that's like where she housed and works out of is-
That, that, for the, for that period of time, she would be a Northborough employee for those hours. Whatever, whatever $7,200 breaks down to for an FTE equivalents.
Okay. So she's only, she's not like, she's not servicing Marlborough Hudson at our senior center?
But, but you're-
She's going to theirs, do you know?
Hey, Carol, it's Steph.
I don't know. I don't, I, I would assume no.
Hi. I'm live at a board of, or a select board meeting. Sorry. Um, I just have a question on the Daybreak Program. Okay. So do you mind if I put you on speaker? Are you going to kill me tomorrow? Okay. Hold on. Okay. Carol, you're speaking to the board. Okay. So, um, the question is, the 7,200, how many towns are involved in this grant?
That's just our town. So, um, the, the, the other two towns, Hudson and Marlborough, they also applied for a grant from MCOA and got about the same amount.
Okay.
That amount of 7,000, whatever, is just for Northborough.
Okay. And then is, so why do, why does, is it a she?
She.
Okay. Why does she have to be a town of Northborough employee, like a seasonal employee?
Well, I think because you can't hire somebody as a contractor if they're ongoing and they're working for a long time. Um, I mean, in part, I'm afraid that if we don't hire her as an employee, she might not want to work as a contractor because it's a lot more complicated for people when they work as a contractor. They have to pay their own social security and the tax filing is a lot more complicated. And I don't want to lose her. So that's part of it too.
So then after this grant, um, can you just tell the board what you guys were thinking about funding in the future?
So I'm looking into one grant. There's a, um, healthy aging grant from the state of Massachusetts that I just submitted something about, you know, to see, I wrote up what we're doing and to see if we can get one of those grants. And also Marlborough is applying for a Cummings Grant, which if they were to get it, tho, those grants are a little bit complicated. You have to have a Cummings property in your, um, town. But because we're all joined, she spoke with them ahead of time and there is the possibility that they could get that grant and then the program would be out of, you know, the four towns or the three towns that it is. So there's different possibilities. I mean, we're kind of committed to getting something. I really want to because it's such a great program.
The only thing that's confused, I know, I, I told them about it. I love it. But-
And maybe Springwell who did funding before might finally get around to doing funding. I don't know.
It's, it's just odd because usually with a regional grant, one town will host the person and they'll be paid through that town. So, so when she's in Hudson and Marlborough, she is a town employee for them as well?
She isn't, she isn't working in those towns. So it was one central regional grant where Hudson did all the, you know, they hired everybody and they did all the administrative work for it. But then Springwell didn't offer that grant anymore this year, or they may, but they haven't gotten around to it. So, um, the Mass Council on Aging would only give it, because they just work differently, they would only give it to each town separately. And we can't do it all together. But she is only working before, she was, she only works in Northborough. She substitutes occasionally in the other towns. And so that's why.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any questions?
Did we get an answer to what the cost is after the grant?
Yeah. What is the cost after the grant is up?
If we don't get another grant?
Yeah. If we don't get another grant. Would it be just the same? Does she charge 7,200 every time or?
It would be more or less that. I mean, part of that is also covering the lunches that people get. Um, so it's, it's not the entire amount. I mean, that's for nine months. So I would say probably it would cost $10,000 a year, probably.
Okay. All right.
But, but at that point, if we don't get grants, I, I mean, if we don't get grants, we decide whether or not to build that into Carol's budget or not, right? Then it's-
Right. So then it would be the town funding a portion of the, uh, position.
Potentially, or, you know, uh, there's the friends that might do part of it, or I don't know, you know?
Yeah. There's alternatives. Yep.
Yeah. I mean, it's a really important program. It is so important to have some sort of relief for caregivers and to have social opportunities for people, you know, that really can't go out to other community programs at all. So, um, you know, we're just going to keep on looking until we find something. But, um, yeah.
I think Jacob has a question.
Sorry. And these are really detailed questions. I feel really silly because ultimately the amount isn't a ton. It's more of the principle behind it is why I'm asking the question. Um, something you said made me ask, we already talked about unemployment consequences, but is the amount that they're asking for, does that cover all of the town's obligations, FICA, everything? Or are we, because I know in our budget lines, we'll have salary here on one line and then FICA is way down here mixed with a bunch of other things. So is this only this, is this only what we're paying them? Or does this include the amount of the salary, as I would say? Maybe John has better language for me.
So I originally-
If we're paying someone W-2, we have to also pay the state, the, where part of the-
So he's just worried about all the, you know, taxes and whatnot.
Jacob, that's 1.45%.
Well, it's a fairly low amount of FICA. I don't think it's a, um, great amount. I did not budget that in originally. However, um, I'm thinking that either we would have to, you know, I, I wa, I prefer to have her as an employee. So it might be that we ask her to like work one hour less a week to make up for that, or that I ask the friends for some money to subsidize part of the lunches so that we can cover all of her salaries. But, you know, one way, or we also have some money in our state grant, I think that could be used to pay that part, you know, the lunch part if we had to cover the FICA. So.
And I'm not saying I wouldn't want to cover the FICA as part of it. I just, the purpose of me asking is it's a question I'm always going to ask, is if I'm being told this thing, we need to pay XYZ person $10,000, I want to know, is that all we're paying? Or is there also other, these other things? I just want to know what the real number is so that I'm, have my head around it and I'm not surprised tomorrow with like, wait, where'd that come from? Does that make sense? And I know here we're only talking about a small amount. So I'm not trying to make a big deal about it, but that's just where I'm coming from.
Yeah. No, I get it. It's a principle of the thing.
Yeah. Sorry. Thanks. But I think you've clarified it. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Okay.
Anyone else? Well, Carol so sweetly is on the phone.
Thank you.
Are you guys good?
Yeah.
I think we're all set.
Okay.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you so much, Carol, you're the best.
Wonderful, yeah, I'm glad you reached me, okay.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, so you were interrupted on grant number two, grant number three is?
That was it, that was the third grant, so the first, no, am I wrong?
There's an additional one that just came in for three thousand?
Right? Was that the same though? Cause I think there was a re. Okay, ten.
Healthy Aging Initiatives, do you have it, I can give it to you?
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, all right. Healthy Aging Innovations, um, and it's a program to promote healthy aging. It's a payment to a contractor to hold presentations, um, let's see if there's any. Nope, there's, you know, no exposure to the town. So it's just basically paying a contractor and we're getting the money to do so, which is three thousand. Okay, so basically the only one that, you know, has possible workman's comp exposure, but hopefully she may get that grant through Marlboro.
And, and there is time to make a correction if she doesn't get the grant?
Yeah.
Meaning, you know, we figure out how she builds it into her budget, or?
Right, perhaps so are the friends, or whatever, yep.
Okay, all right, any other discussion? Okay, is there a motion to, um, accept these three grants?
I move that the board vote to accept the Massachusetts Council on Aging grant awards for the senior centers detailed by the senior center, senior center director in the meeting pack via grant acceptance forms, including, number one, one thousand twenty dollars and two cents for updates to the senior center lobby with new signs of brochure holders, number two, seven thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars to support the caregiver respite daybreak program, including facilitator salary, participant lunches, and incidental costs, and number three, three thousand dollars to fund a contractor to provide a series of presentations on solo aging.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by John, seconded by Mike, this is a roll call vote, Laura, how do you vote?
She's, uh, mute, looks like, I see a red microphone.
I wonder if she stepped away.
Probably stepped away.
Okay, then let's put that on hold for a second, and.
Do you want to see if we have enough?
Yeah, that's a good idea, let's see if it passes, okay. Okay, you made the motion, you seconded. Jacob, how do you vote?
I'll be an aye.
Aye, John?
Aye.
Aye.
An aye vote, aye, it's four, four votes, we have a majority, so the motion passes, great. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is, um, the interview subcommittee recommendation for appointments to boards and committees and commissions, okay. So, Laura and I met with some extremely talented, passionate, experienced people. You have in your packet the, the positions that we are recommending that you vote on. I don't think I need to go through every single committee in person. I would just say that, first of all, thank you to the volunteers for coming forward. Secondly, I can just across the board say that all of these people are talented and committed and we strongly endorse, um, um, voting for them. And thirdly, the interviews, the, the, um, committee chairs always come to these interviews and it's been really, really helpful to, for them to describe the, you know, what the committee does. And in one case, actually, the chair couldn't make it and Carol made it for the Council on Aging. So, is, is, are there any questions, anything you want me to explain? Laura, do you have any comments, you? You're my.
Thank you for the explanation.
You're my subcommittee person, I think, if Angie did these, sorry?
I'm so sorry. Which, um, so I'm sorry, I was coughing and I, did we move over to the select board interview subcommittee?
Right.
Yes.
Yes, we voted for, for people to, um, support the grants.
Okay.
All right, so now we're on the, um, interview subcommittee and I, I just briefly stated, you know, how impressed we were with all of the candidates. Is there something you would like to add?
No, I'm sorry about that, um, we had so many great candidates, I really appreciate the great turnout. I think they're going to be really great contributors to the different groups that they've applied to. Were there any questions on the candidates, or do you want me to go into detail on everybody? I thought that the packet was pretty thorough for what, um, what Angie had provided.
Any questions?
Just a super fast one, if I may?
Yeah.
Because I know Edward LeBlanc, with that same spelling, but I don't, I didn't think he lived in Northborough. This one obviously does, is this person like?
Did your person live in Rhode Island?
No.
Okay, then that's not the same person.
Okay, well, I was going to ask, is this person like possibly under forty or possibly over forty, would you say? Or?
I'm not, I'm not going there.
Never mind, wrong question, all right. I'm just trying to figure out if this is the person I know or someone I don't know.
Okay, next question.
And I'll just have to figure it out when I go to their meeting.
Well, this person moved from Cumberland, Rhode Island.
Well, maybe it is the same person.
Yeah. Extremely.
He was, he had applied for the ZPA, Jacob, and he came from Rhode Island with a pretty impressive background on ZBA decisions. What I liked about him is that he really went through a lot of our bylaws and decisions and just, you know, confirmed that he would have voted similar to how those decisions were written. I liked that he is really rigid, I shouldn't say rigid, but he likes having a routine and a, a real strong process, which I think is important when you look at the ZBA's work. I also liked that he was very empathetic to how important ZBA decisions are and how they impact residents and the, you know, the budding neighbors and the businesses. So he's got a really neat background, so I don't know if that helps, you know, helps you in deciding if it's someone that you've connected.
No, I'm sure it's fine, I literally was just trying to. Sorry, I was just trying to figure out if this was the Edward LeBlanc I know, or an Edward LeBlanc I don't know. But Laura, Laura has a good history of picking good ZBA members. I know for my personal, anyway, I'm kidding, I'm sure it's fine.
He also has an impressive career with the Coast Guard, if that rings a bell with your.
No, I don't think it's the same person.
Okay, all right, then.
I'm looking forward to meeting them.
Okay, all right, then, do we have a motion?
Uh, yes, I, I move, do we want to do it one at a time?
Um, no, I think we can do them all, it doesn't sound like there's any.
Okay, interrupt me if anyone wants to interrupt me, but I'm just going to move through. Uh, I move the board vote to appoint Jennifer Pers- Persons to the Youth Commission for a two-year term ending April thirty, twenty twenty-seven, and to appoint Susan Ogar and Ashley Kalabanao, and I apologize to anyone if I say your name badly, to the Youth Commission for three-year terms ending April thirty, twenty twenty-eight. And I move that the board vote to appoint Stephanie Thomas to the Council on Aging for a three-year term ending April thirty, twenty twenty-eight. And I move that the board vote to appoint Edward LeBlanc as an alternative member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term ending April thirty, twenty twenty-eight. And I move the board vote to appoint Kylie Harrigan and Fabiana Santos to the Cultural Council for three-year terms ending on September eight, twenty twenty-eight. And I move the vote, the board vote, to appoint Jim Davis to the Parks and Recreation Committee for a two-year term ending April thirty, twenty twenty-seven. And finally, I move that the board vote to appoint Emily Justice for the Community Affairs Committee for a three-year term ending April thirty, twenty twenty-eight.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
Motion made by Jacob, seconded by Laura, this is a roll call vote, Laura, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes, thank you very much. And now we move to annual appointment of election officers, is that correct?
Damian is joining us tonight, the town clerk, if you need her, she's here for fees as well, but.
Oh, okay.
Dana, do you want to let her in?
I got it.
Have you guys met, Damian? Yeah, at the financial summit, yeah.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you? So the first thing on our agenda is the election officers. Can you just, um, walk us through that and, um, and then we can vote?
Absolutely, it's Mass General Law that we follow and we usually do this earlier in, say, June, um, so I'm just catching up, making sure that they're all set for the spring elections.
Okay, is there, you know, you all have the list of the officers? Are there any questions, comments? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to approve this list. Laura?
Is that one mine?
Yes.
I don't have names on mine, I'm sorry.
Well, someone else can make the motion.
I could read it, if you want, Laura, if you're into the weather, that's okay.
Thank you, I'm sorry, Mike.
No, no, that's fine, um, I move the board vote to, uh, excuse me, I move that the board vote to appoint, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-four, Section twelve, the individuals listed on the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six election officer appointment list as submitted by the town clerk, for terms beginning September first, twenty twenty-five and ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconds.
Okay, um, Jacob beat you to it, sorry Laura. Okay, motion made by Mike, seconded by Jacob, roll call vote, Laura, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I vote aye. We're all set for special time meeting, yeah.
I just have one other question on that, do we need other volunteers for that position, or are we doing okay in terms of capacity?
Absolutely, we're always looking for new people. I plan on, um, finishing up an application I created for new election workers and hopefully we can get that out by the end of the year, put it online, see if we can get some people to volunteer.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on the agenda.
Do you mind going to the town clerk's fees, just?
Absolutely, yes. So, um, okay, now we are on item number nine, permit fee updates. And since we have our town clerk here, we will go with those first. Stephanie, do you want to just give us a little, quick little background on how this all precipitated?
Um, yes, we need revenue, so.
That was quick.
Honestly, um, many of our departments have not increased their fees for years, and what I mean years, it goes back to the eighties, so, um, yeah. Damian, I don't know how long it's been for your department, do you know?
I, yeah, I actually checked with, um, my predecessor and he said it was before him. So it, it goes back quite a ways, I believe it was nineteen eighty-eight, but I'm still trying to research that.
Wow, okay, um, and as we look through this, it, you know, it's not outrageous increases, really. Are there any, so we're on this one right now, the.
We're looking at the town clerk's fee schedule.
This would be the one that has like business certificates thirty-five to forty.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, where did the proposed amounts kind of, what was the methodology behind that? Cause kind of if we haven't, a lot of these haven't been updated since maybe eighty-eight, if I heard that right. Are there?
Correct, yeah.
Where, where did those amounts come from, like, the proposed amounts, the methodology?
Uh, do you have the colored spreadsheet there, the town clerk fee schedule survey?
Yep, yep, yes.
I, I actually went off of this, I went, um, I took a survey that was done by the Mass Town Clerk's group and, um, checked with Steph on towns that we like to use as comps and I kind of put us in the middle. Some of them were really high, that there's no way we should go that high, like business certificates for, I believe it was Shrewsbury. But I wanted to get more in line with what the other towns are doing and, like Steph said, we need the revenue and it's been a long time. There was one like, um, that I was adding, which was notary services, um. I went back and forth with it, then I checked with the Assistant Town Clerk and my Admin Assistant and between the two of them, since January first, we've done a hundred and sixty-eight notaries. And then out of town were sixty-seven of them. So I think if we just added a dollar every time we do it, when some of them take thirty, forty minutes, it, it would just bring in a little bit more for our town.
Madam Chair, can I chime in on that one?
Yes.
So my two cents on the notary service is, it should either be zero, or it should be like five or ten. Like, one dollar, like I appreciate you trying to keep it affordable, but it's almost like barely worth the effort of the transaction to have money involved for it to be a dollar, because then they have to account for the dollar and the dollar has to go in the whatever, and then we got a whatever, all for a dollar doesn't seem like a lot. It's a valuable service, if you do it out at the XYZ other place, they're charging ten, twenty dollars. So I'd rather either be charging zero or five or ten, that's my two cents.
What do you think about that, Damian?
We actually aren't allowed to charge more than a dollar as a municipality.
I think we should charge zero, I mean, I'm just like, it's so much heck work just to get a one-dollar transaction.
Well, what did you say, you did one hundred and sixty-eight?
Hundred and sixty-eight total since January first.
So that's a hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
But how much extra work is being done to account for every one of those one dollars, a hundred and sixty-eight times?
What are you saying, don't offer notary?
Saying, make it free, keep it free.
Oh, make it free.
Because of the headache of the one-dollar check, or, you know? Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'd like to charge ten if we could, but our clerk's saying we can't, so I'd say, go, keep it at free.
Also, other than notary, are there other fees that were statutorily limited to what we can charge?
No, not on this list, nope.
Okay.
Wow, I'm shocked, I didn't know that.
Let's get them to change the law on that.
Yeah, has there been a push at all, Damian?
At least have a market.
Has there been a push to increase that expense?
I'm sorry, I'm not catching what you were saying.
So has anyone gone through legislature to try to increase that fee, ever?
Not since I've been town clerk or Assistant Town Clerk, no.
Wow, because it is a lot of work, you have to, you know, first of all, make sure and verify that the person is the person and then, yeah, you have books you have to write in and I see it done, I guess.
Right, and, and some people actually walk in and have ten, twelve documents that they want notarized, so it's an hour of somebody's time when, so, that's why we're hoping just to get a little something out of it. But I get, I get, um, what you all are saying as well, it's, it's worth more than what we're doing, so. That's why I went back and forth with it, but I'm not the one doing the majority of the notaries. So I took their advice into consideration as well, or their thoughts, I should say.
Well, the service is worth a lot more than a dollar if we can charge more than a dollar.
Well, and, and kind of on top of that, just, kind of just looking randomly at like a CPI inflation calculator, if some of these are from nineteen eighty-eight, like, some of them, if you just account for inflation, could be more upwards of like seventy to a hundred dollars, which I know would be at the top range of some of the towns, but I'm wondering if that's maybe where they're getting some of their numbers from and, and indexing them. So I'm curious, um, is there like a, a large, is there any like cost associated with updating these fees again in the future? Is there stuff you have to reprint or, or anything like that, or is this, if we wanted to say, okay, let's maybe move forward with something so we're getting some additional revenue tonight, but if we want to revisit it, that that could be done a year or two or more down the road?
Absolutely, we can do it, any, at the vote of the select board, so anytime, if I bring it to you or you decide, you know what, your fees aren't where they should be, let's talk about it, or I see that other towns are raising things and we should stay in line where the communities around us are, absolutely.
Thanks. No, my personal two cents on the rest of them, I think the increases are absolutely reasonable. None of them look out of line to me, they look probably still low from what maybe they should be, but that's okay, we'll accept the proposal for now. I did have a question about home births, um, so what, so what's, so if your birth born in a hospital, then what do we charge for our services, or does the hospital take care of that? Sorry, I haven't had a child born in Massachusetts yet, or do I intend to, but I was wondering.
Very good question, we actually only process home births because we're not a city hospital. But we would only process it if the baby is born in Northborough, so that's where home births commence. So that's where home births come in.
Okay.
And it's very time consuming. I bet each of them take at least several hours going back and forth with the residents and the paperwork and filing with the state. It's quite a lengthy process.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay.
All right. Any more questions or discussion? All right, then do we have a motion to approve the town clerk fee schedules, sir?
Yep.
New fees, fee schedule, yes.
Quick discussion point before I move.
Yep.
Did we, is there a consensus on what we want to do about the notary dollar?
Oh, good point.
On what you all want to do?
I would just say, let's take it, a buck.
Take a buck, put it in the jar.
Sorry.
Pizza phone.
I'm sorry. We're not trying to make light of this.
But you know what? I do think that we have to write this down somewhere to bring to our legislature.
Let's charge the dollar.
Definitely.
I mean, I'm fine with it. I just was pointing out that it seems a little silly to have to keep track of the dollar.
Okay, so I guess it's up to Damian. Is it cumbersome to charge? Because, you know, a dollar or no, no charge? Is it, is it, you know, does it take too much time for people to come up with a dollar? What is your thought, Damian?
I would say no, only because it's very rare that, well, I can't say very rare, but one out of probably five people that come in for a notary is one document. It's generally two or three, whether it be copies or not. So if we're charging a dollar per notary service, we could potentially get $10 for that visit. So I don't think it would be cumbersome at all.
You guys have a card machine.
As simple as entering in a name and putting in a dollar and printing a receipt.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's keep it as is then?
Yeah.
As proposed, no changes to the proposal?
Sounds good.
Okay. I move the board vote to adopt the updated town clerk fee schedule as outlined in the September 2025 proposal included in the meeting packet, with fees to take effect on October 1, 2025.
Is there a second?
Seconds. Seconds.
Motion made by Jacob, seconded by Laura. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Laura?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Can we go to fire, Julian?
Yes.
Is Dave on chief parente, Dana?
Yes.
Okay. Can you let him in? Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. Thank you for your wonderful tour today of the facility.
Did you guys have fun?
Yeah, I loved it. Yeah, that was cool. I want to play. No, I don't really. I would leave crying.
I do not.
I'm just kidding. I would never do that.
The problem is, Mike, once you play one time, you have to keep playing, because that's how they get, that's how they get us in there.
Yeah.
Okay, so would you, Chief Parente, would you like to just give us a brief little synopsis of your fee schedule?
Yes, ma'am chair, I'd be happy to. So I have been here in Northborough for 10 years. These fees have not been touched, to the best of my knowledge, and I could not find when they were last adjusted. So we're in the same place as everyone else, where they haven't been touched for a while. The deputy chief recently attended a Central Mass Fire Inspector Program, and their discussion came up about fees, and it's interesting that a lot of the communities were in the same way we were, that they haven't updated them recently, and those, and quite a few of them had already started. So what the deputy did is he went out and he checked with communities in District 7, District 8, and District 14, which are fire districts, and they comprise, those are in Worcester County, and some of them are in Middlesex County. We're in District 14. And we took those numbers, compared them to what we were, because we didn't, we didn't, we're not in this to make money. We're in it, yes, it's nice to have the increased revenue, but the idea is to help cover the cost of everything we're doing. So we took those, that information the deputy gathered. We incorporated it into, and you'll see that walkthrough that we gave you actually talks about why we made some of the changes we gave you and what they were previously and what they've gone to. And you'll most likely notice that most of the residential ones didn't increase. We put more of our increases on the commercial ones, because we thought that was easier to put a burden on there than on the residents.
Okay, are there any comments or questions from the board? I have one question. So some of them went up quite a bit, like underground, the, I guess it's fuel tank.
Underground storage, underground storage tank removal, yeah.
Yeah. But also public records went up quite a bit. Are you getting a lot of requests?
The way, the way that a FOIA request works is we can't actually charge for the first hour. There's no charge, but we can charge $5 per, per copy. So what we've, what we decided to do was not charge for that first hour, and then just start charging with $25 after the second hour.
$25 per hour?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any, any other questions from anyone?
My only comment, thanks, chief, for all the work, and your deputy for all the work on this. Given all the work that your department does for fireworks display, it seems like 100 is a little low.
Yeah, so the fireworks displays are for only commercial fireworks, and really the only commercial fireworks permit that we have issued since I've been here is for Apple Fest.
Right.
So the large cost for that is not so much the inspection, but it's the having someone on site, and that is charged to Apple Fest. So someone, one of our personnel has to be on site from the, from the time the fireworks arrive until they're out of the tube.
Okay, so they'll pay their display permit fee here, and then they'll pay a detail under the agreement for the detail rate that's on the other section.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I feel better about that. Thanks.
All right. Any other comments?
I love fireworks, by the way. I'm not saying dig on the fireworks. I'm just like, it is expensive, and we got to be safe, so.
The inspections are, I've been doing the inspections for a while. They're, they're not super complicated, but they do take time, because you do it, then you come back and you do it again. You know, you do it like three or four times, because you're looking at different aspects as they build.
Sure.
Okay, so we're a little out of...
I have a quick point of clarification question.
Chief?
So for the...
Sure.
Thank you so much, chief. So for the FOIA requests, when we get requests for documentation, is every, is it just for the fire department now that they're going to be charged a fee, and is it, I'm just trying to make sure I understand this.
So FOIA requests come into us a couple of different ways. Sometimes they come directly to us, and if they come directly to me, I notify the clerk's office. I'm the, I'm the FOIA, the FOIA person for the fire department. If they go straight, if they go straight to the clerk's office, then they send them to us. 95%, 98% of their requests literally take me doing a quick search in my, in my records management system and sending the information out. It doesn't take any time at all. So for us, it doesn't make sense. I mean, we're not even producing hard copies. You know, they send me an email, I send it back to them, and we just track it. So this is for those, this is for those rare, rare requests, Laura, where someone comes in and says, "I need all of this," and it's going to take us eight hours to do it. So it's for those types of requests.
Which I think there was a fee, I'm sorry, I'm trying to see where on the paper, because I think there was a fee for that beforehand, right?
Five, it was $5 for a sheet. So it's $5 a copy.
Got it. Got it. So this is going to switch to 25 per hour?
After, after the first hour, because by state law, we can't charge for the first hour.
Got it. Okay, thanks for clarifying that. I appreciate it. And just to, so there's going to be no charge for those simple requests that people have that you get back to them in a few minutes?
It, it literally takes me, I, I deal with those every week. And like, we get requests for copies of fire reports or copies of EMS records. They literally take no time at all. Most of them are done electronically. And if it's a homeowner, I don't charge them anything at all anyway, because I don't think they should be charged for, right? So it's, these are just for those more complicated requests.
Thank you.
Okay, we're a little bit out of order, so I'm going to ask Mike if you will...
Yes, Madam Chair, I move the board vote to adopt the updated fire department permit and detail fee schedule as outlined in the September 2025 proposal included, included in the meeting packet, with fees to take effect on October 1, 2025, and to authorize the fire chief to administer and enforce the updated fee schedule in accordance with state law and fire code requirements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second. Mike, Mike made the motion. John seconded the motion. Roll call, any other discussion? Roll call vote, Laura?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, and now building inspector fees.
Yes. Bob couldn't make it tonight. He surveyed nine comparable towns, and he said that the fees go back to 1988, so they haven't been changed since. And there's numerous inspections, with even things like in-ground pools and decks. There's a lot of inspections for safety structure. So with all of the increase, the town will generate, he's thinking 100,000 to 125,000 more than what we're receiving now. Yeah, that's not bad. So he wanted to make these effective October 1. Do you have any questions? He gave me a little...
I have a question.
Yep.
I don't understand what, okay, so I don't know what page this is in the pack, one... Page seven. It says 10 per thousand of value as approved by building inspector, minimum 40. 10 per, okay, so new construction addition, it would be $10 per...
1% of the construction cost.
A minimum fee.
It already is that.
That's the current and the proposed.
But the minimum is going up.
Is $60, yes. So there's a minimum of $60.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, he said something about that in my Q and A. Let's see. Okay, he said annual inspection fees are currently at $40. These inspections involve substantial time from admin time. Receiving required documents, sprinkler and alarm documents are required before the inspection. New to current addition of the building code, inspection from both fire and building departments, therefore, the fees for periodic inspection need to be set at $100. Decks are currently 40. Deck design has increased, oh, wait, I thought he was talking about the 40 to 60 somewhere. Market rate, the database shows that the overall average of base fees is $54 per hour per base, which is one inspection. Many towns in the database have outdated fee schedules, and the towns with more up-to-date fees are in line with $60 base as proposed.
Okay, okay.
And the $60 encompasses hourly salary, mileage, supplies, permitting, software licenses, and other items on the budget.
Okay, any other questions?
On wiring fee schedule, these aren't numbered, so maybe I'll just try to, I don't know, fifth page from the back, maybe? There's the wiring fee schedule comparison 2025.
What page is this?
The one that's unmarked.
The one what?
Unmarked.
Oh, okay.
The whole thing. I'm counting one, two, three, maybe fifth page from the back, sixth page from the back. It's, um...
What's at the top of it?
Wiring fee schedule comparison.
Is that the top?
Yeah, it's the heading on the top.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Kind of in the middle.
Oh, yeah, I got you.
There's current fee and then a bunch of blanks for proposed fee. We getting rid of all those fees?
Current fee, proposed fee. Oh, wait. Well, it just says, are you looking at...
Mike has it.
Mine says, is that the one?
There's no change in that?
Oh, yeah, that, yeah. Proposed fee, database average, so there was nothing there. Wiring fee, oh, is this because, hold on.
Superseded somewhere else?
The only one that I could find that didn't have any proposed fee or database objects to it.
Oh, oh, wait, 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 wait. Hold on. Yes. I think you have a copy and other copy, because it says wiring fees have been updated. Angie left maybe a packet somewhere?
Yes, it, on top of the packet was the, was this.
Yeah.
And we all have...
These updated docs are in your packet.
Always adventure to know what's in here. It's like...
Well, there's so much paper.
Christmas.
Oh, wait, maybe it's in the back? Here we go, page nine.
This one.
This packet?
Yeah.
Oh, page nine, right?
It was just page nine of the thing that, of the packet that was put on, one of the many that was put on your desk.
Oh, a desk packet?
That's why when I was looking at mine, I'm like, I don't know where you're seeing it empty. Okay, so...
No, it's, it's like 14 pages.
Look, I found it. It is, it's nine of 14.
Yes, yeah.
There we go.
So, let's see.
Sorry. Did, did Bob provide how much of the total spend and the increase was residential versus commercial?
Hmm.
He has a lot of information here. This is really...
Very detailed.
Yeah.
No, but I know we could figure it out from our permit count basis in our system. We could figure that out. That would be interesting. Let's see, did he put anything in his cover page about that? Let's see. Any other?
I mean, I'm a little, may I, I'm a little concerned that we're going above the average on many of these? 20% above the average on, 20 to 25% above the average on average, I'd say, just by me looking it over? I can see us getting up to the average, but I don't see any reason to go over the average.
Well, and I wonder, because Steph, you had mentioned that he said some of those comparable towns also haven't updated their schedules?
Yeah.
On the cover sheet?
Yeah.
He says, according to available records, building permit fees have not been reviewed since July of 2004, some so far back as 1988.
Yeah, he said... Well, he listed the comparable towns, which...
Some large increases on the extra little thing he gave us. So in this, in this memo, second page, it says, answers the question, some large increases? I guess some of them just...
But what you're saying is that compared to other towns...
I'm just saying, like, electrical, install or replace a single fixture. So let's say I have an outlet that I want to update to, the more child-friendly outlets that are harder to stick things in. This was 20. Now I'm going to have to... This was 20. Now I'm going to have to pay $60 for an outlet that cost me $8 at Lowe's. And the database average is 48. So why are we going to 60 when the average is only 48? Which I still think 60 is too high. I think 48 is too high. But, but I'm not, that's not a general comment. Like, I'd say a lot of these are reasonable, but not all of them. And in general, I'm like, why are we going over the average?
Hmm, that's kind of a good question.
Hmm, yeah.
And I understand if you're saying, well, the average is weighted too low compared to what it should be. But I'm still looking at, like, look, we got to answer to the residents who were saying, you are going over the area average by your own documentation. Why are you doing that?
Hmm, hmm, good point.
Well, and how is that fee collected?
Because.
Single fixture.
When I pull an electrical permit, I pay a fee. What do you want? I want to do a single fixture, okay? Pay $60 with your application. Then they'll come do the inspection. That's how it's collected.
Yeah, and that, if I, that, would that $60 be the same if you did 20 of them? Or is it 60 times 20 at that point? It's 60 for whether you're doing one or 20.
So this says install, replace, single fixture.
Single fixture.
What page are you on?
I'm on page nine of 14.
Is this like a overhead light? Can't we just do that on our own without a building?
Well, and that's kind of what.
No, I'm serious.
Get me started, Stephanie. Don't ask questions you don't want the answer to. I will.
What?
Well, that's kind of what I'm, that's kind of what.
Oh.
No, according to our building department, no.
Permit fees to change.
You're not acquired to use a license for.
You can do it your own, yourself, but you still have to pull an electrical permit. Ask our building department. I 100, or I'm being picked on.
Are we sure about this?
Uh, that's what I was told. That's the hoop I was required to jump through. And we had an electrical inspector come and pick on things that weren't even within the scope of the permit. So I have a little.
But maybe, maybe it's not a light. Maybe it's something else.
Any fixture.
Fixure.
An outlet is a fixture. Those are fixtures. Look, I'm not trying to mix things here because we're obviously, you know, I agree that.
Well, let's put, he probably doesn't get many calls.
No, but it's a good point. Like, why are we, why are we over the, the average?
I don't know. We could ask.
I'd be totally supportive of just being like, go to what the average is plus rounding, give or take, you know? I think it's just, I can't answer the question really well of why did you say we're going to charge more than the area average charges for these services?
What page are you on?
I meant nine of 14.
Nine.
But it's consistent throughout.
Okay, so page nine, Diane. Um, let's see. Sorry.
Would this be worth something to get more information?
So here's, here's an example. So I'm looking at building fee, building permit fee schedules 2025. Mine says seven of 14. Residential. Change in use, all right? Currently, it's 100 plus building permit fee if construction is involved. Plan to not change, but over here we have area average is 72. So we're charging more than the area average for that.
Yeah, no, there are many that.
There's several other examples.
Yeah.
Of chimney, minimum of 47. And maybe that's arguable because we're saying a flat 60 no matter what. Area average is based on the cost of whatever the chimney construction. You know, some of these, I, so fence over seven feet, area average is 37, we're saying 60. Why are we going over the area average? That's just my general question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not against going over the average if there's a good explanation.
That's what I'm asking for.
So, right, I think we probably maybe need more explanation before we move forward on an updated fee schedule.
And then with the commercial, see, it says, did you already say the single item install? And the database average is 91, but we're proposing 80. So it's.
You get a better deal if you're a commercial than if you're residential.
Okay, yeah.
If you're residential, you pay over the average. If you're a commercial, you pay under the average. I can't really sell that.
So is the theme of tonight, you want to stay with the average?
Close. I'm not saying exactly.
Yeah.
And then I'll.
Unless there's a good explanation as to why the average doesn't make sense.
Or if it's just rounding.
Right, or if it's, well, you get a lot of these, so, I don't know, I don't want to speak for them. But I would like, to Jacob's point, to know a little bit more.
Okay.
Maybe there's a perfectly good explanation that will be.
Right. And to be clear, I agree our fees should be increased from what they were. I'm not.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Fighting against that.
Yeah, okay, so he wanted to make, go live with these on October 1st, so how about, well.
November 22nd?
Yeah, yeah.
And then also commercial, residential, cost plus increase, breakout.
Okay, commercial and residential.
Note to our future sales, future agenda item, we should pass laws in this town where fixing an outlet yourself does not require a permit. Or fixing a small plumbing leak does not require a permit. Currently, they all do, just so you know.
In the state?
Yes, and we don't have a law, and we don't have a law to the contrary, so.
I did not know that.
We are under state code. We could make a town home rule law that says, don't need a permit for that.
I'd love to hear the pluses and minuses of that. Okay.
Anyway.
Right.
Okay, so I think we've agreed to move on.
Passover.
Yeah. All in agreement? Yes, nod your head?
Yes.
Okay, so the next item is a big item. Vote to set date and time for the special town meeting.
Yes. So initially, we were looking at October 14th. And with us not getting back, you know, the red lines from the lease from Elegant Banquet's attorney yet, we were getting closer and closer because, of course, there's regulatory deadlines that we need to meet. You know, we need our warrant by two weeks prior to the meeting. So then we were looking at October 27th and the school, they're having their fall concert series, so they can't do that. We did, we were able to lock in on November 3rd. Is there any?
What day of the week is that?
A Monday.
Okay.
Because these are how many players. It's the school that needs to be open. Dana, our cable. John Royce and Rich Carrera from Elegant Banquet's. The moderator, which is very important. And then, you know.
Well, the good news is we have a standing select board meeting that night, so we should be okay.
We do. Yeah, you're right. Yep, so. So everybody should have.
So if. Should be okay.
So basically, we typically start our meeting at 6:00. You open up, you know, a normal meeting. Well, I'm saying annual town meeting. You usually start, you open up a meeting at 6:00 at the school, and then at 6:30 we have town meeting. So if there's any other business you wanted to take care of on that date, you could, and, you know, for a half hour.
I would say that moving it to November 3rd, since September 22nd meeting, we were going to take comments from the public about White Cliffs.
Hmm.
That gives us a couple of meetings in October to choose at least one more to, to get public comments.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Have you previewed this with Elegant Banquet's? I know they had a lot of urgency around trying to go quick. They're okay with that?
Yes, they were fine because they're, they were kind of sweating it. They were like, oh, my God. Time is just going so quick, so, yeah.
So, so for people who, you know, who couldn't make the September 22nd, they, they will be able to offer their comments at the next meeting. So we'll have two select board meetings where people can offer their comments about White Cliffs. That, I think that's great.
I think that's a super solution. My main concern would have been like, is Elegant Banquet's going to think we're dragging things out? It doesn't sound like.
No, not at all.
So that's my main concern on like, that was why I wanted to do it faster, because they wanted to do it faster, so if reasonably.
They did, but then they realized, uh-oh.
And if they're, we can blame them for dragging their feet on the red lights or whatever. But I'm, I'm okay with the November 3rd. I need to say though, I have a jury trial in Arizona the week of the 27th to the 31st. It's set to go all five days, and if we don't have a jury verdict by close of the day on the 31st, they'll make us stay over till Monday, in which case I'll be in Arizona. And that will be very sad for me. You guys can carry on without me. I don't think it's very likely to happen. I'll try to get the jury to give me their verdict before they go home Friday. Typically, juries like to do that.
Good. In your closing statement, we expect.
I gotta be. Got important stuff up there. No. I don't like to hear that I'm from Massachusetts, so I try to leave that out.
Okay.
Fine.
Sorry. It doesn't look like November 3rd is any other type, you know, there's no, other than, it is National Sandwich Day.
Oh.
No, no, so I'm saying let's set it there, and I will do my best to be there, but if they not there, it's out of my control.
Yeah, we understand. And, and as someone pointed out, that's a select board meeting night anyway, so, good.
Okay. So your motion says 6:00 PM. I'd do 6:30. Because that's typically what time we start anyway. And, well, actually, you could have a select board meeting at 6:00, like I was saying. And then at 6:30 would be special town meeting.
So if we have that little brief meeting beforehand, that's a different agenda anyway, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, wait, so say 6:30 in the motion?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Is it, is it, oh, sorry. Can, can we get this on the fall calendar, since it's a fall town meeting? Can we get this publicized sooner than later, just that people can get that date on their calendar?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna, this is the date I've been waiting for, this meeting. I, I put out a lot of information about the things going on, but yeah, we'll get right on it.
Okay, so we have to vote on this, but right now, do you want to just tell us the schedule of events leading up to this?
Sure, yes, so the next meeting, September 16th, the planning board is having a public hearing, and that's necessary for the zoning article to go to special town meeting. And then September 19th, we are having an open house at White Cliffs. Hopefully, the first and second floor for residents only, and you will be required to sign a waiver before entering. But I think this is very important to show residents how it looks now. And they might have had memories from the past of how beautiful it was. It deteriorated some, so we're hoping to breathe life into it again and make it even more beautiful than it's ever been. So that is September 19th, which is part of, I mean, I shouldn't say it's not part of Apple Fest. It's during Apple Fest, so it's good. People will be out and about. And then the next key date is September 22nd at the select board's meeting. We will be having John Royce and Rich Carrera with Elegant Banquet's here to discuss the project. We'll be getting more in-depth on the lease agreement and what to look forward to. We'll be taking any questions from residents. And, you know, hopefully they'll help us to spread the word.
Can you, Steph, can you add a little bit more color on what conversation around the lease agreement we're going to have in that forum? Is it to?
Yeah.
Go through it, so awareness, or I'm not, I don't.
Yeah, awareness, and we're, we know from the town standpoint what we've asked for, and they have the lease agreement from us. But right now, they're just making sure that they're crossing their Ts, dotting their Is, their attorneys looking through it. So I don't think it will change much. I think we were all in agreement. But looking for, you know, I think we'll detail more potential revenue coming into town. You know, what they're going to do for the public, what.
Is, do you view it as a page turn, where we have the lease agreement, there's a party here, there's a party, and we go through it? Or do you view it as a presentation of what the things that?
Oh, definitely a presentation, but, but it will be, a lot of it is within the lease.
Within the lease.
So it's not going to be a page turner. It's pretty thick. But we'll go over any important aspect of the lease.
Do we anticipate making that lease available for the public to review?
Yeah, let me, let me ask the attorney about that. I mean, it, it's going to be on the floor on November 3rd in front of everybody at town meeting. So I don't see why they would have an issue with that, but I just always like to check to be sure.
Yeah, if we can, I would prefer, understand, obviously, we kind of need a version of it that both sides tentatively are okay with. Obviously, nothing's final till the town meeting sings. But some tentative version of it, I think the residents would like to get a look at it as soon as they could.
And by that date, I think we'll be a lot closer, yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have the lease in a form where it's, anything that's not agreed upon is highlighted somewhere. Because in my mind, I mean, if it's what we agree on to fully execute, yet we can't fully execute it because of a town meeting that we need to get it passed in. There's nuance there. I think I'd have to probably understand where we are with the lease agreement to probably have a firm review.
Right, yeah.
And part of, if I can chime in.
No, go ahead.
And part of it may be aspects of the relationship that aren't actually expressly addressed in the lease agreement. Not getting into too much detail, but it sounds like possibly some aspects of our relationship won't be in the lease itself and that are still being negotiated, right?
Right.
Dive too much into our positions on negotiation, but.
Right, and I think it will be great because Elegant Banquet's will be here. So if there's anything that comes up that they didn't think of from the public, maybe we can incorporate that into the lease agreement. Because when we get to town meeting floor, there will, it will be, will you approve this lease or not? There's no, you know, there's no changes on the floor. It's, will you approve it or not? So that's why it's integral to get these public information sessions. I think it's a great idea to add an additional one. And if there is fine tuning, maybe that meeting will, you know, be essential because we'll have everything finalized and almost ready to go for October 3rd. I mean, November 3rd, sorry.
Yeah, I think to Jacob's point, anything that's living outside the lease, like, I'm not sure if things are in the, I haven't seen the lease in its entirety. Like, if in the lease it says, North Borough shall have access to the property once a quarter for events and at this rate. Or like, I don't know what those look like in terms, I know we've conceptually talked about.
Right.
A partnership and trying to find a way that, you know, and very impressive management team in terms of the way they work within towns and community relationships. So I just don't know if those live within the lease or those sort of like, live in more of a, more of a way that we just agreed to kind of like work together? I don't know.
Well, and, and I can say this because they brought it up and, you know, they were interested in building that chapel outside, but it's more of a meeting space too that they could open up to the public. So that's, you know, just another offering from them to the town.
Things be in the lease, like the, the town can use.
Yep.
That's the.
That, yeah, yeah, that, and I think the other thing we should think about for that meeting is things that may not live in the lease, but like, getting residents comfortable what the use case is of the venue and what it means in terms of operating hours, and what it means in terms of if you live on an abutting neighborhood, and what it means in terms of noise orderance and, and things like that. Whether it be like, you know, any, I don't know, with, I'm unfamiliar ground here for me. But like, whether it be like, everything inside by dusk, whether it be like, you know, music and lights by 11:00. The nights, whatever that is, I think we need to come with that level of detail to just have, be fully transparent with what we're signing up for.
Absolutely, and a lot of those key details will be explained by Elegant Banquet's that night. Because that, that's already come up. You know, little things they're doing to ensure that, you know, everyone will be happy being a neighbor to White Cliffs.
I got the really, you know, my impression, they really want to be good neighbors is what I get. Be lucky to have them as neighbors. I do think, you know, there's going to be members of the public who have smart, good questions that we haven't thought of yet. We've been really diligent and thorough, I think, but we couldn't possibly think of everything, so. And because of when the 22nd is, there's a holiday that day, I do think having a second day for the public to chime in would be great.
Yeah, and like I said, it will be that much closer to finalizing, so.
Does having the second public information session, does that move when we close the warrant? So is that going to be moving off of the 22nd?
We probably shouldn't close it till after that.
Yeah, we were thinking, Jason, 10/6, was it? What date was it? Do you remember that?
Yeah.
So we just move to the second public information session?
Well, it was 9:22, but now we could.
Well, 9:22 is our public information session, I'm saying the second one, didn't we, did, I thought we?
I thought it was 10:06, but on here, she has 9:22, but it...
Well, that's our, that is our first one. That's our first one.
Two weeks, yeah.
But if we're in November 3rd, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, does, does that safely fall within that time?
You're talking about this motion, yeah.
Closing the warrant early was so that no further, um, articles were submitted.
I just want to make sure that we've fully considered public comment before we close it, that's my only concern, really.
Yeah, so, do you want to come, you can sit here.
Yeah.
No, that's all right.
I see your point, yeah. Your, your, yours isn't gonna say, the article isn't gonna say the lease with this language, it'll be the lease.
Correct, I think that, the, the nature of the articles will be closed, but the language of the articles may not be final.
Got it, okay.
Until, until the warrant is posted.
Okay.
So we could still safely close on 9:22?
Correct, yeah.
People are aware that that's not locking us in.
Right, the three articles, the, the zoning, the, the, the lease and the TIF would all be included in that, but the, the details of those may be still developing.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Do we need to close it on September 22nd, now that it's November 3rd?
No, we don't need to, but, so, I know, um, planning board had, you know, a couple of ideas for zoning, um, articles, so, we're, I, I would assume we'd get them before the 22nd, but maybe not. I mean, we could do, that was only two weeks, right?
Yeah, that, that was kind of what the...
Just stay there.
Well, I think, I think the recommendation was to have a short period of time, so that the, uh, the warrant wouldn't get loaded up with additional articles, and that it would simply be focused on.
Yeah, I was just kind of wondering, like, what from zoning did they absolutely have to get in to this special town meeting, which is fairly specific to one topic? I, I would be hesitant to just start throwing stuff in, even though it may be valid and needed, if it can wait till spring, I would be more comfortable with that, and letting the focus be on what this special meeting is called, what?
Well, no matter what, that's gonna be the first article, is White Cliffs.
Right, right.
And then we'll take care of whatever business there is after, but, um, yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, if there's a couple that, I don't think it's a bad idea.
Could I, could I suggest, to, sorry, to the chair, I don't, to interrupt you.
No, go, please.
But, um, there is the option of reopening it, too, if something were, if an emergency were to happen, you know, we have up until the, the posting deadline, I believe, to, to close it again, we could reopen it, and, well, we, but the board could reopen it and close.
Yeah, weeks before.
The warrant as well.
We've done that in the past, I think.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, any other comments or questions about November 3rd being special town meeting at 6:30? Okay, let's vote so we can make this official. Is there a motion?
Oh, yeah.
Doesn't have my name on it, but?
Oh, it's me.
I'll go, oh.
Hey, do you want me to do it?
No, I got it, sorry. Um, I move the board vote to open the warrant for the special town meeting on Monday.
I think you meant the one above.
We knew.
10.
Oh, sorry, 10, my misreading, sorry.
Okay.
I move the board vote to set the date and time for the special town meeting to be held on November 3rd, 2025, at 6:30?
Yes.
PM, in the Algonquin Regional High School Auditorium?
Yes.
79 Bartlett Street, Northborough, Massachusetts.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Motion made by Jacob, seconded by Laura, any other discussion? Roll call vote, Laura?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Yay.
Okay, all right, so now we have...
November 3rd isn't like any holiday or something like that, that I'm not thinking of, right?
Just Sandwich Day.
Just National Sandwich Day.
Okay, that's important, but we can schedule over Sandwich Day.
If there happens to be sandwiches waiting for me when I get there?
You won't be mad, no.
All right, so now, opening the warrant. On September 8th, and set, and to set the deadline.
Yeah, so...
I can read this one, though?
Yeah.
You, you may.
Yep, go ahead.
All right.
Is there a motion?
Uh, I move the board vote to open the warrant for the special town meeting on Monday, September 8th, 2025, and to set the deadline for closing the warrant on Monday, September 22nd, 2025, at midnight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mike, seconded by John, any other discussion, questions?
Quick discussion point, this is previewing when we get to a later point on our agenda today. I am gonna ask later on in the agenda today to put on the agenda for September 22, something I'm having in mind that may end up being on this, but that would be within this period anyway, so I don't think it would be a problem, whether the board agrees or doesn't agree, I think the timing is fine.
Okay, so you'll have that opportunity?
Bring that up later.
Okay. All right, so, any oth, any other discussion? Roll call vote, Laura?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
And I vote aye. We're all set, then?
Nice.
It's in motion, okay.
Trust level dropped.
All right, now, um... Select Board Goal Setting, okay, so, we received goals from Stephanie, we received goals from each other, and, uh, since it is 9:00, and we still have executive session, I'm going to recommend, cause I would like to spend some time on this, and I'm gonna recommend that we devote our energy and time to, you know, to really discuss these things when, at, at the beginning of a meeting. Does anybody just, I'd love to hear.
I probably just missed it, but I don't know that I saw Stephanie's, and I maybe just missed it in my emails.
It was sent, I sent it to everybody.
Maybe I just need to go back.
Me, I missed it as well.
Maybe I'll go back and check.
Oh, did you?
Okay.
Doesn't mean I didn't get it.
I pa, I may have gotten it, but in my head, I don't.
Oh, it's in the packet.
Okay.
It's, so, the packets, the packets, we don't have any prep time on.
Oh, yeah.
So it's, anything that requires any sort of prep time in advance?
Okay.
Will greatly appreciate it, most of the stuff we can do on the fly, but...
I just received yours today, too.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not gonna break or place blame.
And that's my fault.
I'm just saying, if I have it, I need to know where it is, so I can make sure I read it, that's all.
Okay, it says, um, general priority goals, oh, I should say, and financial, too, uh, fiscal year 2027.
I, I would agree, Madam Chair, with your, uh, motion to, or idea to, to maybe move this forward to another meeting.
Because I think we should all look at each other's, you, you just received them tonight, um, I didn't want to break open meeting law, then we can post it in the agenda, and, um, since I was able to read all of them, I will say that there's a common theme here, so I don't think it's gonna be a difficult discussion, but, um, so, if you don't mind?
I'm okay with moving.
Okay, great. Then we will move on to reports. Laura, do you have any reports tonight?
Minor quick today, uh, this past month, I appreciate all the department heads' contributions to the financial planning, I'm sorry, the financial summit, there was a lot of work that went into that, it was eye-opening, and I also got to participate in the interview subcommittee, and I really appreciate all the volunteers for the different boards and committees in our town. And that concludes my reports.
Jacob?
Um, watched the planning board meeting, they're doing their job admirably. Uh, I replayed the ZBA meeting, they're doing their job admirably. Anyone who's interested, those meetings are available for you to watch, too. Fire station building committee, um, we did have a couple of change orders, uh, one related to, uh, the number of really big boulders, and, um, we approved it, I, I was in agreement, the board voted for it. Essentially, the way the contract was led out is, uh, we don't know how many boulders, big giant boulders are in this land, your bid is going to be up to this amount, which we thought was a reasonable amount, that there would be at least that amount, so we wouldn't get, lose out on the deal. But if there's more than that amount, and there's a certification process for actually measuring the boulders, I asked if there was a giant pool that they do displacement method, but they don't, they use other measurement techniques to figure out how big the boulders are. And then there's a per unit price that we're obligated under the contract to pay for them, and so, there's not, so there was a few tens of thousands of dollars that we've spent on change order for big boulders.
Will they be rolling said boulders down a hill?
I doubt it. That'd be, anyway, so, big boulders are expensive to move, there was another couple smaller, uh, adjustments, one relating to loversize, it was under, it was like 7,000 or something. Um, there is some concern, I don't want to be too specific, because I haven't gotten specifics, but there may be some delay in the schedule, up to maybe 30 days. There's still, that's not super fine, but, uh, essentially, the conditions for the soil, for the foundation, um, weren't exactly as they estimated, so there was a little more effort needed to create the conditions correct for the foundations, and that took more time. That's the main reason driving the delay, is what I'm understanding from the reports we're getting. One area that we're gonna be addressing in the next meeting, I assume, is there's been a substantially higher amount of contaminated soil to be removed from the site than I think was, uh, anticipated. And, um, we've got some reports of soil that have been removed, um, I've been trying to follow up really closely on the reports for that, so I'm overseeing and trying to do my best to make sure I understand what's happening. There's also been more soil identified somewhere in the 500 or 600 cubic yard range that still needs to be removed, that was more recently identified. So they're all discussing whether that's in the contract or not in the contract, and I don't think a firm answer has been reached on that, but if the conclusion is that it's not in the contract, then they'll be coming forth with a change order for that, in the order of 100,000 or more for removal of contaminated soil. That's petroleum contamination.
Okay. Well...
May, oh, uh, in the next couple of weeks, they're going to put a mock-up, um, so you'll see this going up, it's essentially a real version, but not i, of what a piece of the building will look like. Um, not, it's not for optics for the citizens, although, yes, we can look at it, it's real, it's really for the contractors, to make sure every contractor knows how the different materials are interacting together, obviously, having a se, uh, very tight building envelope is really important, so you want to make sure that if I'm using this fastener to go through these materials, it's gonna not create envelope issues, and so they essentially have a test version of the final version that the contractors can sort of learn on, so to speak, so that it's all done 100% perfect on the real version. Meanwhile, the design people can also look and be like, well, that's not the color that I thought it was going to be, or...
And that's gonna be onsite.
So that'll be onsite.
Exactly.
And that'll be there for most of the duration of the construction, but the purpose of it, I'm just wanting you all to know, is, and, and it's not extra cost, it's built into the cake, um, but the purpose of it is multifaceted, but part of it is, probably the main purpose is, so all the contractors who are working on the materials have sort of a test to refer to while they're doing it.
Excellent.
But you can also see what the different materials are gonna look like from an observer's perspective.
Good.
But it's not the real wall, it's not where the real building will be.
Anything else? Thank you very much, John?
So, three quick updates for, um, some committees, so I attended my first of, some committees, not as excited as Cemetery, I know that, yeah, you said yours.
That's the hot item.
Verify it.
So, master planning, uh, master plan implementation committee, um, kind of eye-opening, so I, I came into it new, and read the charter, dived in the meeting, not clear to me that the activities that they're doing and prioritizing fit in the charter of what the master plan implementation committee, so, I'm gonna wait for the minutes to come out, but Blake Street, Complete Streets, and understanding, um, some of the time spent there, as it went to town meeting, um, it didn't pass, and trying to get it, better understand that, but the one thing that really I want to get clear on is, if you look at the charter and you look at the prioritization, there's, there's a pretty big disconnect, so, just an observation, more to come after, but just wanted to kind of bring that up. Financial planning committee, wow, two years, what a, what a, um, improvement, like, just having been on that committee, um, real talent on there, um, more of a balanced committee, in my view, establishing policy, um, really, really having those conversations, and what they're talking about, detailed, the fixed assets, I really enjoy the way that committee's digging in, and the seriousness in which they're taking the job, so, um, that, to me, was, I really enjoy that. Um, not a lot to report on traffic safety committee, still trying to figure it out, um, so we had some conversations, and, um, but my second meeting's coming up, but just wanted to say that, I, I, this is my three updates on my committees.
Excellent. Mike, did I ask you already?
Uh, no, you haven't, so...
Have a report.
I do.
I'm like, he's waiting for the question.
Right, I'm just, I'm trying to get the timing right. Uh, well, today, I was able to attend, um, a tour and, uh, of, of the Massachusetts Fire Academy in Stowe, um, along with, uh, Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, uh, and colleague Jacob, uh, which was awesome, um, seeing our own firefighter, new hire firefighters there, um, you know, doing, uh, doing the training, got to see, um, you know, uh, uh, them go on a hypothetical call to a three-story burning building, and how they handle that, and putting on gear, and, and, and how to evacuate a building, and, and see them cut apart cars for, for training on auto accidents. It was, it was, uh, really humbling, uh, to see what new, young firefighters go through for their, for their training, so it was, uh, it was really awesome, like to thank Captain McManus for, for giving us a great tour, uh, and Chief Parenti, and Deputy Chief, uh, SPC for, for organizing that, so that was really cool. From Peaslee, uh, the chairwoman Erica, um, should be meeting, if not already, but soon, with the OPM to hammer out a more, um, not concrete, but a better idea of sort of what, uh, where we're gonna be going forward, what dates are, um, as far as milestones, and kind of where we see things going, um, so I should have more updates on that as soon as I touch base with her again, and we have a, another meeting scheduled. Other than that, um, there's a September 11th remembrance, uh, at the fire station on Thursday, that I'll be attending, I'm not sure, uh, anybody else is able to, um, but I'll, I'll be there, um, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I have no report, Stephanie?
Sure, I'm skipping a lot, because we already discussed it, um... Okay, our, uh, the financial summit, thank you for everyone for participating, it was great. Financial Planning Committee, and like John said, we had our first meeting, and we were gonna go over things tonight, but now we're not because of goals, but, but we, a lot of the financial aspect was from the financial planning, um, meeting, and it was, it was great, um, they were in, um, participation with it, but it was, it was a really good meeting, so we have some great ideas coming forward. Our, of well-being event at the senior center was, um, in August, it went very well, it was sponsored by the Northborough Cultural Council, the Goddard School, um, Diane and I visited, um, and we, on behalf of the board, we gave them a proclamation, um, for their 20th, uh, 25th year celebration, um, being in town. Special Town Meeting, just so everyone knows the articles before, so far, the White Cliffs, we have the lease, we have, um, a TIF, we have rezoning to Business East, and we have an easement for drainage outflow for the new fire station, and pending miscellaneous zoning articles. Recreation, the summer camps concluded successfully with extremely positive feedback from families, fall registration is underway. Health and Human Services, they, um, are going to have a CPR AED training, September 10th, 5:30 to 7:30 at the library, they're going to have a blood drive Tuesday, October 21st, from 12:00 until 6:30 PM at the library. The Board of Health is working on developing animal keeping regulations at this point in time. DPW, road paving, Washburn Street, Lancaster Road, Sawyer Road, Prospect Street, Mulberry Lane, and Pleasant Street Extension, um, had begun, let's see, Thursday, September, they, they started Thursday, and then it goes, um... Oh, no, no, it, no, sorry, September 4th is when they started, and it goes into the following weeks, that's what he was saying, cause I was like, no, it's not finished yet. ARPA sidewalk repairs have started, Gale and Monroe Streets have started the week of August 12th, and Allen Street will start later this year, one would connect Monroe from Route 20 around to Aspen Park, back to South Street, the other would extend on Allen Street from the bridge over the Asbit to East Main Street. The gates are being installed at the DPW garage, they're not operational yet, gates were installed and operational, but they're pending fine tuning to ensure volunteers can easily open and close them according to the select board's schedule that we had, um, agreed upon. that we had, um, agreed upon at a prior meeting. Chapter 90 funding came through at 300,000 versus the typical 200,000 with the transportation bond bill. That was very good to see. That will, um, help us with a lot of new ventures. Northborough Media Connection, um, is their new brand name, Dana, right? Informational video series about the fire station project is up and running. Public and education initiative, Northborough Media Connection, will be working with administration and the moderator to launch a proactive campaign to educate residents on town meeting procedures in advance of our spring town meeting. This effort will improve transparency and community engagement by helping residents better understand processes such as calling the vote and other very important procedures that, you know, if, if we don't line those up, it, it just increases the time of town meeting. So we're trying to make sure it's very efficient and run well. Planning, the, the soft dog park opening, um, happened, but we, we're still looking at a formal ribbon cutting, um, mid to late September. So I don't know if you guys want to come to a date to actually.
I've been there a half dozen times, so I'll bring Sadie.
Okay. Yeah, that's good.
John's been soft opening it.
I know. I'm meeting a lot of neighbors, um, meeting a lot of, so it's been a nice community connection, I think, meeting a lot of people I otherwise wouldn't have met.
So do you like it?
I think it is the best dog park that I've ever seen.
Yay.
And that feedback on it's so consistent. It's really a remarkable job. Couple of things that DPW probably needs to check, like there's leaking in the water fountain. And I was going to write an email. Other things to make sure, and the gates are a little wonky, that.
Okay. I think, yeah, they still have a little list of things to do.
Yeah, I was going to cut, yeah.
But they wanted to open it because everyone was using it.
Yeah, yeah, no. And, and I mean, I mean, Boundary is a very dangerous road. Like, if you go from those trails and you do it at six in the morning, tractor trailers, trucks humming by you, or you go later in the day in cars and people on the phone, it is an extremely dangerous road to do the trail system and access. And, and that's, for me, that's a pretty big safety concern. Anyone that, and there are people that are accessing the trails to access a dog park. And if there's a way to prioritize building in that parking at Boundary Street to get to the gate they made with the trail committee, I think for public safety alone, we should get on it. You know, it's just, especially if a dog decides to take a, my dog's fine, but if a dog decides to like take a turn into the road and his car's coming with no notice, even on leash, um, but there's not many slimmer roads with that kind of traffic and speed limits in Northborough.
So you're saying we would need to clear out an area to connect?
I think we're really good. I talked to Brian Belfour. As a select board, we should really support him. I have run into him at Hanafords. R.I.P. Hanafords, missed that. So, but we have brought, with Brian, they did create a, if you know the, if you know the trail system at all, Boundary Street Trailhead is parking in it.
Okay.
And then you can take that, and that goes to like Little Pond, and it goes to, um, Jehovah Witness, and it goes like a real good trail connector. You're on the Boundary Street parking lot. The DPW smartly put in another gate on the side that, so if the parking lot's here, there's a side gate here.
Okay.
And if you cut a trail, it's not a long distance, to the Boundary Street parking where the trailhead is in Boundary Street, you can avoid going on Boundary Street. So just from, and I, I mean, I would hate for something bad to happen. Like, I would think if we could prioritize that, um, that would be good. It's just a very thin, I mean, if anyone's on, there's no shoulder. Tractor trailers frequent it. Like, it is a, it, it is a little.
That's a good idea. Uh, I'll talk, who, so is it just Brian's involvement? Or do you think we need like planning?
I mean, Brian, they can knock it out quick. I'd say let's make it as easy on that trail committee as we can. They do God's work. Like, so like, but if they can connect that, I just think it take, it de-risks us a bit in terms of like having something bad happen.
Okay. That's a good idea. All right. Fire Department, Fire Station Project progressing with a three-week look ahead schedule now posted online, if anyone's interested. Police Department, the youth academy was a success. The Foundation of Indian American New England hosted an event honoring the Northborough Police Department as well as local veterans and community leaders. Um, Marshall's first birthday celebration took place Thursday, September 4th, at Memorial Field. Must have been spoiled, little guy. Library, the art show was very successful with over 350 people attending. Jen joked that it may have been because of the free ice cream. We don't know, but that's all right. Library received a $10,000 grant for collections and programs serving seniors. Memory loss survey, um, the senior center hosted a well-received community conversation the following week after the memory loss survey ended, fostering dialogue and support around memory loss. It's such a pandemic these days. It's, it's scary. So, um, a lot of people are interested. Be Red Cross ready, hurricane preparedness, Monday, September 15th at 6:00 PM at the library. Free Narcan train, Narcan training, September 23rd at 6:00 PM at the library. MISGIS, implementing firewall replacements and cybersecurity plans to strengthen our infrastructure. Um, we already went over the senior center grants they received and supported by the board. Rockin' the Burrows was on Chronicle, Thursday, August 28th at 7:30 PM. Rockin' the Burrows sings rock and roll songs from the 50s, 60s, 70s. This group is inspired by the Young at Heart chorus and practices at the senior center on Thursdays at 1:00 PM. We're famous. Veterans Jeff and Yassel, his assistant, attended a Veterans Roundtable at UMass Medical School with Senator Markey and State Secretary to discuss central Massachusetts concerns. The event identified affordable housing as the most pressing issue, noting that many veterans struggle to find stable housing facing eviction or unable to afford current options. The situation was described as a black hole of veteran housing in central Mass. Vietnam Vets Welcome Home Dinner planned for September 28th at the American Legion. Legion has finished their kitchen renovation and has planned a welcome home dinner for the Vietnam vets on Thursday, September 28th, 5:30 PM. They were seeking organizations that help veterans to set up information tables. The event would accommodate 130 people, including veterans and their spouses. Wreaths Across America, the Northborough Junior Women's Club, Burrows Cares for Troops, and the Vincent F. Picard American Legion Post 234 have started fundraising to support the Wreaths Across America being held in Northborough for the second time this year. They will be hosting an event at the Howard Street Cemetery on December 13th, 2025, at 12:00 PM to remember and honor our veterans by laying remembrance wreaths on the graves of our country's fallen heroes. And that's all I have for tonight. I purposefully made it middle. Go ahead.
I have no report.
Thank you. Okay. Um, moving on, we now have public comment. Is there anyone who has? Anybody? Do you see anybody waiting?
Did we ask Laura about?
She was the first reporter.
Oh, right, right, sorry. Don't worry me.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're not unforgettable.
Anyone have future agenda items that they'd like to?
Me, I, um, as I alluded to earlier. Um, and I saw my intention to have a debate about it, just because it's not on our agenda today. But I'd like to have on our agenda for our next meeting, which I guess is the 22nd.
Um, and that's fired.
Yeah, so, uh, whenever our next meeting is, I would like to have on our agenda whether or not the select board would support putting another warrant, um, article for our special town meeting. I'll summarize it very briefly, what my concept is, and then we can debate it, potentially, if the chair would let us, at our next meeting. But, um, the article would be to, um, amend the appropriation made in mush, in Article 2 of the September 23rd, 2024 special town meeting, for the raise appropriate transfer or borrow authorization, that we simply propose to town meeting and see if the town will vote to reduce that appropriation by approximately, and we put the exact number, but right now I know it's approximately 6.5 million, uh, which reflects what has been recognized as contract bid savings. So that's it. It really is, um, that doesn't affect the contingency, which, of which there's still millions of dollars of contingency within the, um, budget. My concern and reason for raising this is that, over the past many meetings since the bids were completed, there's been a slow, in my view, morphing of the description of that money from originally contract bid savings that is, no one's ever going to touch, to the most recent meeting, I was given an accounting statement of all the accounts relating to, um, this project from our OPM, and this amount is just considered part of general contingency. And so our project is now sitting at somewhere around 10 to 11 million dollars of general contingency. And I would think that it's at least worth considering whether the town wants to reduce its contingencies by around 600, 6 and a half million, which is the contract savings, and keep all of the contingencies. And it's obviously, I'm sure, ripe for discussion and debate, and I'm sure there's contrary views on that, but I'd like to put that on the agenda.
And, and we'd like to hear more. Okay. So just so, um, to, to facilitate getting this on the next.
I can write out exactly what I'd like to and send it to Stephanie.
As soon as possible.
Yes, please.
Okay, great.
But it'd be basically what I just said.
Great. Okay. Anybody else?
Um, not necessarily for an agenda item. If it could just be maybe a piece of follow-up, Steph. Just the, uh, the speed signs on Northgate that aren't working. I know, uh, Chief Britton had, had said he was going to be following up, I think, this week with the vendor.
Right, yeah.
So if maybe for next meeting is part of your updates, if, if there's anything updated.
Okay, those were from the ARPA.
Right.
Yes. Okay. Yep.
All right. Anybody else? And any other business to come before the board? Anything else? All right. Then, um, first of all, then we, we have to go into executive session. And for executive session, we have to approve meeting minutes of July 21st, 2025, August 4th, 2025. So, executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and to vote on the proposed agreements with Massachusetts. Wait, I'm sorry. Okay, I don't, I, I don't think I have to read all of that. What I, I'm, I apologize. Okay.
I think you should say the topics, right? I do think.
Okay.
The topics need to be mentioned.
The Massachusetts Coalition of Police, AFL-CIO, Northborough Police Patrol Officers Union, Local 165 Patrol Officers, Massachusetts Coalition of Police, AFL-CIO, Northborough Superior Officers Union, Local 165A Sergeants, Northborough Municipal Employees Association, NMEA. Also to, um, discuss strategy with respect to negotiating a tax increment financing with Sancho Ben, and also to discuss strategy with respect to rental agreement between the town of Northborough and Elegant Banquets for the White Cliffs property. These discussions will be held in executive session. So, we need to vote to move into executive session. At this time, the board will enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, a tax increment financing agreement with Sancho Ben, and the White Cliffs rental agreement as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position. We will also be approving prior executive session minutes. The board will adjourn from executive session and will not return to open session. So, do I have a motion? I have a motion from Jacob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mike.
Madam Chair, can I just add, in case anyone listening is confused?
Right.
We're not talking with Sancho Ben or Elegant Banquets in this session. We're talking internally about our negotiating strategy, just so we're all clear on that.
Thank you.
Okay, so in case anyone was wondering who's listening.
Thank you. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Laura, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, this, this, do I have to adjourn this meeting?
Um, you say that you're going to enter into executive session.
We'll adjourn from, and not return to open session.
Right.
You did say that already.
I did say that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to do adjournment anyway? Adjournment of the open session?
God, I forget.
I don't think we, well, didn't our vote just do that?
Basically did.
Yeah, I think I.
All right, then.
You want to say, I moved to adjourn the open portion of the session?
She uses the same one every time, so.
Yeah.
I think we're good.
Okay. All right. So we are done here for the open session, and I'm going to recommend a three-minute break.
Oh, thank you.
Perfect.
It's great.
Thanks, everyone.
You also can't have executive session, you got to wait for the press to leave.